Good morning, this is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for June 14th, 2016. And I just, unfortunately, they're not here, but I just wanted to officially welcome to the board, excitingly, two new project managers. Jella Pranga, who was a planner at the Bronx Borough President's Topographic Unit, and Jonathan Kirschenbaum, who was a planner in the city of White Plains. We're really very happy to have these new planners who have already started to dig into projects and know that it's going to be a great success working with them. So, okay. Okay, we'll begin with the special order calendar. Decision items, item number one, 17304 BZ, 5 West 37th Street, Manhattan.
Hello, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Eric Palatnik.
Good morning. Promotion to grant? Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number two, 20205 BZ, 1111, 131st Street, Queens.
Good morning again, Eric Palatnik.
Promotion to grant? Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Continue hearing items, item number three, 636, 54 BZ, 9612, Seaview Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jaclyn Calcanio of Acreman, and I represent the applicant. I'd like to respond to your comment yesterday. We had asked for a two-week adjournment because they're actually doing the work yesterday and today, so we will be submitting new site photographs addressing all of your previous comments.
Okay, so when do you think they'll finish with the work?
The owner said that they should be done today, so he will send someone out to take photographs in the next few days.
So, maybe we say in two weeks you submit, just in case you're not finished today.
Okay.
I mean, everybody has wishful thinking about construction work, but it never happens, so what do you think? So how about you submit in two weeks and come, sorry, one, two, so that would be submitting on June 15th for continued, when, the 12th, what?
If you guys don't mind, I don't know what's being submitted.
Yeah, I don't know what's being submitted.
If it's a lot for you to review, you can push it, but if it's, you feel like it's a small amount, you don't know.
I don't know.
July 12th is kind of...
July 12th. July 12th, oh, I see, okay. All right, so let's do that. Okay, so then you're submitting on June 15th for continued hearing on June 28th.
You're submitting tomorrow?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you mean, okay, maybe we could revisit this.
Let's start again, so that means you would have to submit right before the hearing.
Okay.
So you'd have to submit either June 22nd, which is next week, for hearing the following week.
I mean, it should just be site photographs addressing all of the issues that had to be resolved.
All right, so submit on the 22nd for hearing the following week, or actually, if you can submit on Monday, that would be better, Monday, the 20th.
Okay.
So June 20th? Yeah. Submission for hearing on? June 28th. Okay, still June 28th, okay. Oh, yeah. Okay. Item number four, 20262 BZ, 950 Allerton Avenue, the Bronx.
Jaclyn Calcanio of Acreman for the applicant.
Sorry, could you speak up, it's a little hard to hear.
Oh, okay. Jaclyn Calcanio of Acreman for the applicant. With regards to the landscaping plan, there was a question about the existing, the existing shrubs that were not labeled. We will definitely make sure to label the existing plantings. I know we made an effort to number and label the proposed plantings, but...
Yeah, it's just, they can't just say "bush."
Right. Okay.
Also, I had made a comment about the northwest corner of the site.
Along Paulding Avenue.
On the corner of Allerton and...
On the corner of Allerton, okay.
But I think the landscaping plan shows planting there, is that not adequate? Existing evergreen bush. Oh, maybe it's just not... Let's see.
So I guess there's supposedly a few, according to the site plan.
That's fine, it just needs to be maintained, because it's kind of overgrown.
Mm-hmm.
So as long as they just don't leave, just don't leave that out when you're tending to the rest of the site, that's all. Yeah.
Okay, so will we submit...
So it needs to be upgraded in other words. Yes, those photos showing that you tended to that part as well. Yeah.
Okay.
But then we had questions, a few more questions about the planting.
Are these existing planting strips that are outside the retaining wall, the brick wall?
They will be outside, because it is, there's already planting beds there, so...
How is that allowed? That doesn't belong to you.
It's outside of your property.
DOT property.
They have to get their required permits to plant there, but that's, that's where the plantings have been there before.
There were planting, but she's saying that they're existing beds, so there probably were plantings before.
No, there, there's grass there in the photographs, you see grass.
Right.
That could have been a DOT sort of sidewalk thing, no?
I don't think so.
No? Yeah, but so I don't, what's the, what's the process for planting your trees and going to have to get a revocable consent for the trees?
No.
That's what you have to do. But it's not a street tree planting, it's not following any standards for street trees.
They're putting up the cypress trees that are just outside the property line.
Right, and you know, I don't know, maybe they uplift the sidewalks, I don't know the DOT would be okay with this. So I'm a little confused about why that's been shown, if you don't even know whether DOT would allow it.
Well, the, the owner has been maintaining the grass there, so I'm not sure if...
Grass?
Yeah.
The proposal is basically a very dense buffer zone, it's a totally different kind of planting than grass.
Right, okay.
And it's got to be within the property line.
Yeah.
Be outside of your property, it's got to, you have to provide the buffer within your property line.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't see how you can assume use of city property to meet the buffering requirements.
Okay. The buffer along that side is against the commercial property as well, so, I don't know, maybe it's, it, there's a commercial property on that side, on Paulding?
Paulding?
No, you're on the street edge.
Yeah.
You're on, so Paulding, that was the other part of it, is the planting isn't shown as running past the, or in front of the parking area, and it should, that's the whole idea, that you're shielding the parking and the commercial from the public. And it, it's right now, there isn't anything in front of the parking area, and then the rest is in the public way, which I don't understand.
So based on the plan, there is this strip that's running between the property line and the building, and I don't know if that area, and that seems visually at least, it's wide enough where the greening can happen, the shrubs can be put, the buffer that we're talking about, instead of being on the Paulding.
Yeah, maybe. It seems to me you should be able to do it.
And same thing goes, and same thing along the Williams Bridge, there seems like there's some, there is a couple of green shrubs, but it would be worth it to kind of, there's an existing evergreen bush, so there is a green patch within the property line, and yeah, I think you should explore how to green those rather than rely on the city.
Inside the property, property line, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if it means, you know, reducing some of the parking or operations on the interior, that's what it means, right? Kind of you're relying on city property to meet your program needs on the interior.
Okay, we will explore having the landscape buffer inside the property line, what you're suggesting, but are the locations, the proposed locations, okay with the board?
Well, that's the thing, so the locations don't go far enough, is the point, right? So you show that run of trees on Paulding, and then it just stops, and it should continue to the parking spaces.
Okay.
And then...
Do you want them all the way across the entire property, along Williams Bridge?
Along Paulding, yeah.
Okay.
And then, there's a curve cut there.
Are they going to have to move the air machines and the vacuum machines that are along Paulding, is that...
Yeah, they would have to, to be able to fit.
Well, maybe just do it short of the air machines, because it's installed already.
They're pretty, but they're pretty much up against the property line.
No, you do it short of the air machines.
Oh, I see.
You stop the planting before you hit the air machine. And then on Williams Bridge, there's sort of this spotty planting after a certain point of the existing, I'm not sure why that's spotty, you've actually got a planting bed there, so why isn't that further planted?
Okay, so...
All the way up to that existing evergreen, I don't know what those two, are those lights? What are those things? Nothing's evergreen.
Okay, so you want the plantings on Williams Bridge to be extended up to the existing evergreen?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then on the corner... Yeah, all of those things on the corner of Allerton and Williams Bridge that are labeled existing bush, how many, what kind, and so on. And then there were open notes from the last time that really need to be addressed? There were many things we talked about the last two hearings?
Yes, we were waiting for approval on the landscaping plan, then we're going to have a very comprehensive submission addressing the fence, the, the brick walls, the wooden storage shed, the need for painting, and the striping of the parking spaces, as well as showing all of the landscaping that's been done.
Okay, so once we have a landscaping plan that's acceptable, then you'll install the landscaping and make all those corrections prior to our decision?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so, I mean, you know, it would actually, hopefully this is the last time, but it would actually be helpful if you brought the architect, then we could have a conversation directly with the person who does the drawings, it's much more efficient that way.
Okay.
Instead of it's like telephone tag this way, and it gets lost in the translation.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so, are there any speakers on this? Okay, so, you said that the July 10th is not, 12th is really, so...
20.
19, July 19th?
I'm in July, July 12th, that's 20, and that's just a...
Yeah. Oh.
I'd ask for two.
So, okay, yeah. So they have 20 each, they have 20?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think for this, just to check the landscaping plan, we're okay. So let's, do you know how long you're going to need for the landscaping plan?
I think maybe it will take a few weeks for that.
Okay, so then you need like, say, three weeks, or in that case, it moves it to August, right? Yeah, so, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Yeah, everyone's, is that true? Yeah, so there, so let's see, one, two, three, you would get, no, actually, what we could do is, you submit on July 5th, right after the weekend, and then, and then you could come back on July 19th, I don't think we need a lot of time to review that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item number five, 32788 BZ, 1362839 Avenue, Queens.
Hello, good morning again, Eric Palatnik. You've requested an adjournment.
Okay, you wanted a four-week adjournment?
Yes, please.
For submission four weeks from now?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, so that would be July 12th, if that works perfectly, so, so a submission on July 12th for an August 2nd hearing.
If I may ask, I'm going to be out of town at the beginning of August, may we have the hearing on August 16th?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you want to submit later, you can?
Uh, yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
So July 26 submission.
Thank you.
Item number six, 498 BZ, 12704 Guyborough Boulevard, Queens.
Don't apologize, in our submission, we erroneously did not update the board on what our plans were, make clear what we were doing with the landscaping and the parking lot, so I apologize for that, I guess it's a good place to start. The landscaping, we were waiting for your board to approve the landscaping plan that we submitted to you, so that was why we haven't done the landscaping. The parking lot should have been done, the contractor was approached, and an arrangement was made, and they were to come out, we're going to supply you photographs to show what they did to clean up the property, the parking lot, remember, we had this whole discussion, your board suggested we repave it and restripe it, we had asked if we can clean it up and restripe it, the board said, let us see some photographs of what that looks like, so there was a mistake made with the contractors' scheduling, we're going to be getting them out there again, when I asked them for the hearing was the proof that of, God, we forgot. So if we could have a few more weeks for that, we could submit to you probably in the middle of July sometime.
Okay, so, and, but we are good with the landscaping plan, right? So why don't you do the landscaping work?
Do the landscaping, and we'll clean it up, and we'll come back to you with photos of everything, if that's okay.
Right.
There were some other items the board also was, had raised, as far as we'd expect to, showing the street trees in section 37-931, we'll amend the plans to include that.
And I think there was something about the trash enclosure?
I didn't hear that. I apologize. What was the comment on the trash enclosure?
I thought it was the chairs.
Correct reference to street trees, and so on signage compliance, that's what you're going to provide now. Yeah, hours of trash pickup, that's all we were asking, replace and maintain and paint.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't see anything, is there...
Well, I guess the trash enclosure is noncompliant with current regulations.
Oh, the distance from the street?
Yeah.
There's the requirement that it be within 50, I think more than 50 feet from each street.
Right.
And that was a, well, not recent, but it might have been about the same time that this was, probably before this was acting on, so we would, I'll amend our paperwork to make reference to that.
Okay. Are there any speakers on this? So what did you say, how much, well, actually, so you're going to install the landscaping?
We're going to do the landscaping of the parking lot, as I imagine you'd like to look at, and we could maybe mimic the same calendar that we just had, that would give them time to get it all done.
Till August 16th?
Maybe July 26th to August 16th.
Yeah, that's perfect. And you know what, even, even because you're showing photos of installed work, even if it's a later submission, as long as it's before the hearing...
The hearing date.
Hearing.
Okay.
That would be good.
Thank you.
Because the goal is to get it in.
Yeah, July 26th is a lot of time, but the holidays and that, but well, thank you for the leeway, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. New cases, item number seven, 11402 BZ, 2493 Richmond Road, Staten Island.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. David Busonelli?
Morning.
Application submitted is to extend the term of the variance for existing one-floor and cellar office space in an R2 district on Staten Island.
Did you hear, did you listen to the executive session yesterday?
I was not at the executive session yesterday.
So just so you know, for future use, it's on video, and you can listen.
Okay.
You don't have to wait 10, you can listen.
It's been a while since I've been up here.
Yeah, I knew that, okay. Okay, so we'll just go through our comments that we had on it, I wanted to know whether there was a difference between the last approved plans and the proposed, I couldn't find any.
No, there's no differences.
Okay. The landscaping that's at the site, you can hear we're talking about landscaping a lot on all these renewals, we try to upgrade the quality of the site.
Okay.
So we know that the landscaping is kind of shabby, as was described.
Yeah, it could be improved.
Yeah, so it actually...
Significantly.
So...
And the site is overgrown with weeds.
Yeah, they, they need to get somebody...
There's no maintenance.
Yeah, they need to maintain it properly.
So you need to, in terms of drawings, update the landscaping plan to show the number and type of trees and shrubs that are either proposed or existing, and then install them. Okay, so what we need is photographs showing that the landscaping has been installed.
Okay.
The other question we had was, we think the community board submission is incorrect, they opposed it, but they didn't explain why. Can you check that that's the right?
Yeah, they, they did have a problem with it, I wasn't at the hearing, I had a conflict, but there's been no issues with the building since it was built, so I don't understand why...
Can you find out what the, what the issues of the community board were?
Yeah, I will find out.
I think it was because they were delayed in coming back for their renewal extension.
So it's like a change role objection?
They're saying it's been over two years, so you shouldn't approve it again.
Okay, but can you call the district manager and find out what the reason for the oppose was?
Sure.
Then another comment was, there's a large sign that seems like it's in a holding pattern, waiting to get reinstalled, there can't be a large sign, so the sign mount should be removed, and the sign needs to be removed.
Okay.
Anything else, do you leave any other comments? Okay, are there any speakers on this? Okay, so those are the things, so the main thing is actually getting the landscaping in.
Right.
Cleaning up the site, photographing the whole thing, you know, walk around and do a really good global photography tour.
Okay.
So that when you submit images to us, we don't say, well, what about that corner, we can't see it.
Got you, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
And this is the landscape, not just within the property, but also on the outside of the property.
Right, that would be the perimeter, right along, right along with the perimeter.
On the perimeter, walk inside the site.
On, on, yes.
Yeah, walk inside the site, turn around, look back at the building, so there aren't like blind spots where we say, we wish you'd given us all the photographs.
Okay, we'll do.
Okay, good. So I think we need, so to do landscaping means you need to work with your client to get the stuff installed, and all that stuff, that's going to take a while, so...
It's going to take, especially given the warm weather coming in, it's going to be a little bit difficult, so, I'm not sure if they can do this kind of planting in the warmer weather, I'm not, but we'll have to consult, so I would say at least a month for me to submit that.
Yeah.
And then come back in, in August.
So I would say...
I don't know why it wouldn't be done in the...
Well, no, warm weather.
It just has to be maintained, it has to be watered.
You have to actually water this.
No, understood, but you said about...
It's better than doing it in...
Replanting certain things and so on, that's what I'm concerned about.
No, I think the reality is, if you hire a landscape guy to do it, and they're busy, you don't get the landscaping guy, right? Unless you do it yourself, right? That's the reality in the summer, everybody's doing it.
Right.
So maybe what we should do is just say, get it done by the second week of September, that would give you enough time to install and all that.
Right, because some of the, some of the plants may be dead on their way out, they may have to be replaced, so if it hits, if it gets into the 90s, that's going to be a pretty difficult task to get the plant.
Okay. Okay. So how about you come back on September 13th?
Sure.
Is that good? Where you submit the photographs of a completely improved site, it looks beautiful, you know, it's, so by, by August 24th?
Sure.
Okay?
Okay, very good.
And if you have questions about this, contact your project manager, have you been in touch? Carlo Cusolanza, is that still the project manager?
Yes.
Okay, any questions, just call him, don't like...
Sure. We'll do.
Grasp around trying to figure it out yourself, okay?
Great.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number eight, 22004 BZ, 500 Driggs Avenue, Brooklyn. Never tall enough for you.
No, even, even this might be a little low. Good morning, everybody, Hillary Asra, Sheldon LaBelle, PC for applicant Chalk Gyms. We attended the executive session yesterday and to address the board's comments and concerns. First, as to why the applicant added additional sound attenuation measures. So the BSA approved a change of operator in 2012 via letter of substantial compliance. At that time, there was a conversation between the building management and the new gym operator that they thought there could be additional sound attenuation measures. The floors above the gym are not residential, there's two floors of commercial and then residential above that, but there are commercial tenants, office tenants in place above the gym. There were no complaints, there were no complaints in 311 about the space, but as an act of good faith and to be a good new neighbor as the new operator came in, they decided to proactively add those measures, and there haven't been any complaints from any tenants or building management since the new operator has come into place in 2012.
Okay, thank you.
As to the hearing notice being posted in the building, I do have pictures that they went in the building yesterday and posted notification throughout the lobby and in the doors of the building, so we'll be submitting that to the board. I also have pictures here if you'd like to see them. As to this sprinkler and other fire measures, yes, those were all approved by DOB in 2007, we'll be submitting the DOB biz printouts that indicate that all of those measures have been approved.
And if you have fire department sign off, that's something like digging through the files?
Sure.
Is that what we really need to know, that the fire department signed off on those things?
We will confirm that. As to the signage, I know there's concern over the sign analysis, that it indicated there were 48 and eight square feet of signage for 56 square feet total. The banners on the second floor were included, but not all of them, that will be changed. There are 12 total, they're each six square feet, only the eight along Driggs Avenue were included in the sign analysis, there's two on North 9th Street and two on North 10th that were not included, so the total is actually 16 square feet more, it's going to be 72 total, so that will be reflected on an updated sign analysis.
And it's still complying?
It still is complying, correct. And the eight square feet that was listed for the door sign and window sign is still correct, so it'll just be the additional 16 square feet. As to the discrepancy between the proposed square footage versus the approved square footage, we spoke to the architect about this, who had been the architect for the entire building, actually, since this project was originally filed, and he noted that there was in fact a discrepancy, the prior plans were incorrect, they remeasured the space, and the correct dimensions are as listed on these plans. It's specifically for the second floor, the lobby dimensions were correct, but the second floor has actually been 9,117.6 square feet, the gym's footprint has not changed at all, it was a measurement error on the prior plan, so the new plans are correct.
So it's 9,117 square feet?
On the second floor.
On the second floor.
And the first floor remains at the same dimension at, as before, 972.71 square feet. So the lobby was always correct, the second floor did have a 60-something square foot discrepancy, which has now been corrected on the new plans.
So I think my confusion is, as per the application, it says the net area of 13,083 square feet, which includes 9,117 square feet for physical cultural establishment, plus 2,894 square foot of office, part of the physical culturalist, plus 1,007... foot of office, part of the physical culturalist, plus 1,070 common area.
So, the offices, we can clarify that on the plans and also clarify in the statement of facts, the offices are not part of the application. So, the second floor PCE space, which is highlighted on the plans, does not include the offices. The second floor has the PCE space, there's a hallway that divides four offices, which are not part of the application.
They're not PCE accessory offices?
No, no, they're not. They're not part of the application.
Okay.
And those aren't part of the PCE space, so we will have the architect modify that to indicate that those are not part of the application and...
I think the confusion was more in the statement of findings, if you could just clarify that.
Sure, and we actually have updated that with a table, which we'll be submitting, that indicates the discrepancy and also clarifies which portions are part of the PCE and which ones are not part of the PCE.
And as you know, the, like, the final statement of how much floor area that both appears in your statement of facts and on the drawings, is what ends up in the resolution?
Yes.
So, you want it to be correct, otherwise the Department of Buildings is confused and...
Absolutely, and we've also, in the chart, clarified that the prior BSA approved plans in the prior resolution had different square footages listed. It was only, I believe, a little over 7,000 on the plans. The resolution had 10,038, so we're going to make sure it's all consistent now for the new operator. And additionally, we will be, as I mentioned previously, submitting the updated sign form and having the signs on the plans as well. And I believe that was everything from the executive session.
So, you're gonna show an elevation of the signs?
Correct.
Okay, are there any speakers on this?
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. Anthony Scudino for the Fire Department. Just in terms of the fire safety systems, can confirm, sprinkler was signed off in 2007, it has been maintained and it is operational. There is an active place of assembly permit and has recently passed inspection. The negative problem, negative point is, the interior fire alarm, there's no record of application getting its way to the fire department, nor does an inspection, a fire department review of the plan, nor operational inspection record take place. So, we're gonna have to just check the interior fire alarm, and that's it. The place itself is clean and operating nicely, and all of our records indicate chalk, so that we already have made all the proper changes in ownership on our end.
Okay, great, so they just need to clear up the fire alarm inspection?
Just clear up the interior fire alarm, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so you have your marching orders. Okay, so, how much time do you think?
Depending on how long the fire department, everything else is almost ready, quite frankly, for submission this afternoon, so...
How about we put you on for, I think we can close this because there's no open issues, we just put you on for decision on August 2nd? That'll give you enough time to struggle with the fire department issue, okay? So, then you would resubmit ideally July 12th?
Right.
But again, if the sign off for the fire alarm shows up later than that, please just submit it when you have it.
Okay.
So, end August 2nd for decision, because we're gonna close, okay?
Great, thank you.
So, for a motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Ms. Ashley Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Chanda?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Appeals calendar, item number nine, 244, continued hearings, 24415A, 677, 5th Avenue, Manhattan.
Good morning, Chair Perlmutter, Commissioners, my name is Jay Siegel, I represent Microsoft. A basic premise has been that the culture wall is not a sign because it does not meet the test of the board.
Can you speak up? Yeah, don't...
Is that working out?
Yeah, maybe hold it in your hand, it's very soft for some reason, you're missing your...
Also, the background voice is not hearing.
I'm Jay Siegel. Our basic premise has been that the culture wall is not a sign because it doesn't meet the test the board enunciated in Bravo. That for display to be a sign, it has to call attention to something other than itself, and that our culture wall will not display or call attention to any Microsoft product or service. I did not, at the review session yesterday, I did not understand the board to quarrel with our enunciation of the test or our conclusion that the culture wall would not meet that test. On the other hand, with respect to other requirements for a sign, that they, inside a building, that it must also be within a window, the board had a lot of questions about it, and I understand it's a lot more complex question. I know Commissioner Montanez especially doesn't think that the sign has to be within the glass, one of our premises, but I don't think that the board has to reach the question of defining exactly what inner window means, if I've correctly understood the fact that the board agrees the culture wall doesn't meet the Bravo test of having a message on it that relates to a product or service. And if I'm correct and I'm understanding, I wouldn't want to try to resolve a very, much more difficult question about what an inner window means. That's my presentation. Any questions?
Anybody? Any, no, sorry, now we need DOB on this, thank you. Kurt?
No light.
Is it not plugged in?
Is it plugged?
Do you have it plugged in?
Uh, yeah.
What is that?
Okay.
He's got technology. It's a light?
Check the back.
We need our audio visual squad.
It's on the floor.
Okay, sure.
Do you need a light?
Yeah, maybe turn off.
Are you doing it right? Oh, right, thanks.
Kurt Steinhaus for the New York City Department of Buildings. Eight feet in electricity, that's all this case involves. That said, there are two relevant exemptions to the sign regulations at play here. One requires that the sign be non-illuminated, the other requires it to be located within a building, though not in a window, but the video wall qualifies for neither. The video wall is illuminated because it is designed to give forth artificial light. On the other hand, playing video makes the video wall flashing because the screen exhibits changing color or light effects. Secondly, the video wall is located in a window. The department is not suggesting that internal displays of any distance are located in a window. However, given the fact that the video wall takes up the entire width of the window, is not visible from inside, and has set back a mere eight feet in comparison to its 800 square feet of surface area, the video wall is indeed located in a window. Therefore, because the city of New York has no authority to regulate the content of signage, and because of its illumination and location in a window, the video wall is a sign. Like I said, eight feet in electricity is all we need to know. And there were some concerns yesterday.
Why, where's the electricity part?
Because it's illuminated and...
Okay.
So, the New York Times said that it's behind the glass wall, a 20 by 40-foot electronic screen will display non-commercial digital artwork to pedestrians and drivers on 5th Avenue, so this just goes to the point that you can't really see it from inside the building, so it's located in a window. Here's our zoning resolution definition, which we don't believe. And as for the people who aren't in the room right now, the neighbors might object to this. In the New York Post, we recently had a complaint about a flashing sign that was, quote, "Keeping people up at night." The Post said that a 20 by 10-foot video display of Beyonce has been flashing day and night in the window of Topshop, a trendy retailer at Broadway and Broome Street. The giant screen has been keeping residents of the posh neighborhood up at night. During one stretch, it operated for almost 48 straight hours, neighbors told the Post. "It's like Topshop has stolen the nighttime," said one resident. "The light reflects on all of the other building storefronts, it amplifies the light. The sound and light get thrown into the apartment and ricochets around the room," she added. "Topshop is acting as if it's a totally commercial area and it's because, and it's become a total burden to the residents," said Laura Tenenbaum, 67, who's lived in Soho for 43 years. "It's starting to feel like Times Square. We already have one of those, we don't need another." So, this just goes to the point of video displays in windows being regulated as signage. Here we have another video display, this one is outside, it's probably the most famous billboard in the world right now, at the Marriott Marquis Hotel.
Could we just go back to the previous sign? Because I think what distinguishes that from the culture wall or display that's gonna be on 5th Avenue is this is advertising items that are for sale in the shop. So, this really does qualify as an accessory sign.
Okay, so what about a sign displaying non-commercial, "Save the whales"?
But that's not the fact before us, right?
Okay.
The fact before us is whether there is a nexus between what's on the site and what the imagery is, like the Bravo story, right?
Right, but assuming that it is just non-commercial art, and we actually disagree that it's not a market, that the culture wall is not a marketing device, and we are absolutely happy to provide more information if given the opportunity to submit another submission. But I would just like to point to the Second Circuit's case in Lusk versus Village of Cold Spring from 2007. To choose a familiar example, a hypothetical bulletin board signage on the exterior of a house of worship. Does the zoning resolution authorize the review board to make a judgment as to such a bulletin board's architecture and design, size, color, style, location, and form only? So, that's what we did in Bravo, we were looking at the size, color, style, location, and form. Or, may the Bravo, may the board also take into account the sign's message, the name of the pastor and the title of her next sermon, or a quotation from the Quran or the Book of Revelations? Using a secular illustration, does the ordinance permit the board to assess proposed theater marquee, like, although it's not a theater, on the basis of its size, shape, decorative detail, lighting, and the like only? Or, does it allow the board to factor in a judgment as to the historical character or other characteristics of the announcement of the marquee displays? So, we are proposing that the content, the announcement of the culture wall is not relevant to a determination that it is a sign because it shares the structural characteristics with other famous billboards, such as this one, although it's not weatherproof because it's indoors. Here we have other displays, just more of the billboard, just showing non-sequiturs.
So, the department determined that that was a sign even though there's skiers on it, or skyline, or things that are not related to the hotel?
Well, actually, what's going on right now is that it's a holding, this is actually pretty similar, it's a holding pattern, because they haven't rented it out yet, so it's actually being used to advertise the display itself, which a recent New York Times story demonstrated about Van Wagner, where they typically put up just non-sequitur artwork to advertise that a billboard is for sale.
Big cheese refers to cheese, that sounds like selling cheese.
It's not, it's just selling the billboard. Okay, so as for some of the research that we would like to elaborate on in our next submission, as long as the board doesn't vote today, window displays congruent with the, and this is from the Journal of Fashion Marketing and Management, and I would like to note that our inspectors are not fashion police, we are focusing on the structural characteristics of signs. So, the window displays, or window displays congruent with the consumer self-image were found to be more successful in attracting customers. Window displays were less successful when they only contained promotional or style information, which is what this entire case has been about. They've been saying that just because there aren't any products, it's not marketing, except this research from the Journal of Fashioning and Marketing is telling us that actually it's a more effective marketing device because it's not pandering and peddling products.
We can't regulate self-image displays, we can't...
Right, but we do regulate billboards, and if it's at, if it's at "Save the whales"...
But how different is it from designing a facade or of a building to draw attention to the content that is being sold, even though it's part of architecture? How are we making that distinction here? I mean, that's also drawing, I mean, you could have in, like, the Apple store that's there in that GM Plaza, I mean, granted, that's in an open space, but that's drawing attention, it doesn't have any sign, anything.
Well, it has an apple inside.
It has an apple inside, but even without it, I think it could draw attention, because you're in this space and all of a sudden you see this, this clear white box right there. So, I think architecture also draws attention, so how are we making this distinction? That's what I'm trying to struggle with.
This is a digital display, so that is where we're drawing the line. It's a digital display playing video, and just like the Marriott Marquis Hotel that we just saw, nobody, nobody in Barto Avenue was claiming that the digital displays weren't signs, they were claiming that they were just not one sign.
That's different, so...
Counselor, digital art that's displayed by a corporation that owns the property on which the art is displayed is always an advertisement according to DOB's reasoning?
Always is not a term that we would like to use, but in this instance, just the content of a digital display in a retail store in a window would be where we would like to draw the line.
By virtue of the fact that the display is in a retail window, not because of what is on the display itself?
Right, not because of the content of the display.
Well, but for instance, there are very famous, let's say, entrepreneurs who have world-class art collections, and art includes video art. So, those owners, who, for instance, I think of the Lever House as an example, it's owned by a developer who has a very major art collection and installs within the lobby of the Lever House all the time changing art displays. They're recognized artists, we know their names and so on, and I don't know that he's ever put in video art displays, but easily could. I've seen displays where there are very large panels set up, and they are certainly close to the window, so, you know, six feet back sometimes, or even four feet back sometimes. Would that make those installations, because it's in a commercial space, an art installation or a regulated sign?
Well, they're not illuminated, are they?
Of course they are. No, it would be a video, a piece of video art, be video art, which is a recognized art form.
Well, I...
Long-standing recognized art form.
And it's actually quite common to see in sort of commercial spaces like Lever House or where you have big lobbies, that are used for, you know, art installations, and it's sort of a little chilling effect to say that if it just happens to be illuminated or it happens to be sort of of a video variety, that if it's in the lobby and it's visible through big windows, that this would be considered signage, you would basically shut down, you know, a lot of sort of the public art areas in New York. So, I'm thinking that, you know, your argument needs to be a little more maybe focused, because it's now very broad.
That's actually not public art, though, it is private art on private property. Public art is curated by the city of New York in public parks.
No, 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 no.
No, not necessarily.
Often, there is private art on display on private property, which is visible from the street or actually approachable by walking onto, Lever House being a great example again because it has this plaza, where you can walk onto the plaza and touch the art, right? And so, is that art a sign? Right, it is not on city property, and it's not part of a public art fund or whatever, these are, these are property owners with significant art collections. These are, these are property owners with significant art collections, right, who are, who want the public to see it.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, I have a, so, and this is a little bit deja vu all over again. I feel like we've had this conversation with Bravo where, when we were at the point where we didn't see any connection at all between the word Bravo and parking garage, we were, well, it's like an art installation, and you can't, you can't chill art installations. That's.
But you can't pick and choose.
Not public policy, not consistent with New York City public policy and its art life, right? And then we looked at that, um, that fantastic installation on the Macy's parking garage, which is clearly an art installation, right? Which doesn't draw attention to some outside thing other than itself, right? And that's how we came to the conclusion on Bravo, that you needed a, a nexus with something other than itself, right?
All right.
Regarding the Beyonce sign and other illuminated sign, are there any regulations that limit the amount of illumination at night?
Not.
Either in the building code?
Not yet.
Sorry?
No. Um, the zoning resolution has a provision where the Department of Buildings is authorized to promulgate a rule, but it has not done so yet.
But isn't that more, I mean, even with respect to other signs that we've looked at with the department, where the big concern really was how bright the sign is, and not so much that it's a sign, but that it could be seen from space kind of thing, right? So, so isn't that what should be going on? That the department should be looking at illumination levels, and then you don't have a problem? Because I agree that, um, even those, uh, the new internet, um, stanchions that are up, they're really bright. And so that's put up by the city. They're really bright. If you live on the second floor, you need blackout shades now. So, you know, I think that sounds more like what we're talking about here, not whether it's a sign, but whether the illumination levels are disturbing to the neighbors.
Well, that's exactly what the aesthetic nuisance of the sign regulations for illuminated interior signs is supposed to address.
But they, those were written before there was video display with the intensity that there is.
Right. But we had the text change back in 1998 where people were shown, in 2001 where people were showing up at the public hearings complaining about Blade Runner. So that, we haven't gotten to Blade Runner yet. Um, I mean, obviously, the world is moving forward, and, um, eventually, maybe that's where we want to go. But for now, we have Times Square. We have the Marriott Marquis flashing displays that everyone love. Everyone loves these spectacles. Um, and so if just random, um, content on these signs makes these not a sign, then that means that Times Square is actually out of compliance because that's not, because there are minimum sign size standards, um, along Broadway. And so if that's not a sign, that means that we need to go issue a violation against the Marriott Marquis for having a non-sign. So we really, um.
Well, they could fix that easily by occasionally flashing the word Marriott on the screen, right? That would, that's all you need, is some nexus back to something, or occasionally renting that out as an advertising sign, which would be allowed in that district, right? So that could be fixed just by programming.
It could, but I still, um, as a government attorney, I would not advise my client to make a content-based determination as, as to whether, um, a flashing screen is a sign.
Well, but if we go back to Bravo, that was content-based, right?
It wasn't. Um, I just read the Second Circuit opinion from 2007 that said that color and style and font, um, were permissible aesthetic considerations, but that the announcement, which is what the Bravo determination said, that the word Bravo, um, was not relevant. The announcement, um, it could be anything.
Well, but if it said the word parking, then we wouldn't have had so many hearings.
Right, right. No, absolutely.
So the content was relevant. If it said parking, we wouldn't have, it probably wouldn't have even come here, right?
At the end, I would hope that the content wasn't relevant, but, um, I mean, we did create, um, a connection to the marketing scheme, and so we would like to fill out the record a little bit more with, um, marketing materials for, um, let's think. But I guess my question is, what would be most helpful in terms of, um, market research? Are we focusing on the technology aspect? Because a lot of technology companies don't use technology in their advertisements. It's all about what you can do with them. So to segue to H P, oh, and I actually really liked the Kodak Coloroma, um, the design and whatever. It's basically the same.
Yeah, that was very.
So this is from H P's website. It says about us, "Our vision is to create technology that makes life better for everyone everywhere. Every person, every organization, and every community around the globe. This motivates us, inspires us, to do what we do, to make what we make, to invent and to reinvent, to engineer experiences that amaze. We won't stop pushing ahead because you won't stop pushing ahead. You're reinventing how you work, you, how you play, how you live. With our technology, you'll reinvent your world. This is our calling. This is a new H P." Now, to me, that sounds like pictures of camels intersplay, interplayed with, um, the H P logo is marketing. It seems like H P as a technology company is representing, um, is presenting itself, um, through this marketing program, um, as inspiring citizens around the globe to create with technology. Um, and so we presented to the record, um, the sign application from 556 West 22nd Street, um, which was granted a permit and assigned off for a sign, illuminated, non-advertising interior accessory sign inside the property line, and it was in a C63 zoning district. Zoning Resolution 32644, um, says that, it implies with zoning resolution 32644 for illuminated or flashing signs. That was the only reason we use the word "or" because for this particular provision, the size restrictions, um, for an accessory sign are the same, um, whether it's flashing or illuminated. Um, sorry if you're having trouble reading. Um, in six, C six, because of blur, um, in C6 districts, C63. And the districts indicated illuminated or flashing signs with total surface area not exceeding those shown in the following table are permitted. And then C63 is one of the districts, and it says five times the street frontage of the zoning lot in feet. Um, and that's what the plans for that particular window sign application, um, allowed.
Doesn't it still have to be a regulated sign for this to apply?
Right.
It still needs to qualify as a word sign, right?
It does.
Okay. So we're still working on getting to the word "sign."
We are.
Right.
And, uh, we are happy to present, um, more information about marketing in general, um, and it's.
Well, so, because we don't want to prolong this further than necessary.
Okay.
Um, the, the appellant submitted a lot of material about their own, um, product, right?
Right.
And, um, were clear that the culture wall, as they call it, doesn't use, um, for one, uses an outside programmer that's not related to Microsoft. So it's an, in other words, like an outside art consultant who puts together these, like, what I described as Escher-esque displays, because that's the one I remember the best because it was the most impressive.
Mm-hmm.
And that, and so there isn't a linkage between product and, as far as we can tell, in terms of how the programming works, there's no linkage between the advertising component of Microsoft and the people who are hired to do this art wall display. So I don't see how you get there. And, and, you know, they talked about old software, legacy software. That part I don't relate to because at some point you can't use legacy software, the computer won't run it. So they might have to move to a software that's even maybe their own software. You know, I don't know.
Right.
But in terms of what we see, there's no relationship. And I know, and, and there was, the, the department had an opportunity to respond to that submission and didn't respond in any way to persuade us that there is a linkage. So I'm not sure where you want to go from there.
Okay. So my first response to that is that commercial art includes Norman Rockwell. Um, obviously, he painted a lot of aesthetically pleasing, non-commercial artworks, but he also would, um, be hired out for advertising for magazines. So just the fact that perhaps a non-commercial speaker is involved does not mean that the speech itself is inherently non-commercial and not marketing, because you can always hire, um, or you could, um, hire, uh, a street artist or something to commission, um, a piece of art, uh, to, uh, to make your store more, um, aesthetically pleasing. So if, uh, and as far.
To make the store aesthetically pleasing isn't the same thing as advertising product?
Right.
Because design makes the store aesthetically pleasing, we hope. Nice wallpaper, beautiful carpeting, chandeliers, whatever. Those are not regulated, right?
Right. They don't look like a billboard.
But they could look like a billboard. They could be, they could be wallpaper of chandeliers.
A good example is the, at the corner of Fifth Avenue and, I think, 56th Street, which is the, um, Armani store. And it has, right along the window, it has these LED strings of lights.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, but the way it's lit, the A and Fifth Avenue is kind of, that section of the lighting is kind of gen, in, in that LED panel, the A of Armani and Fifth Avenue is kind of lit slightly less.
So you perceive it.
You perceive, you can perceive, you can see that, but it's, it just looks like, if you look at it in the first blush, it just.
But that's still, that would still be an advertising sign as subtle as.
But it's not, right?
And that's. What you're saying, A and Fifth Avenue to show the A of Armani, right?
Yes, yes.
So at that point, it crosses, it crosses the line because you can read the A, which is clearly the Armani, whatever, Exchange or whatever.
Right.
I was going to say, because in Bravo, they were able to point out, D O B was able to point out the connection with the overall marketing effort of.
Brand.
The Park Fast. But I don't think there's any connection that has been shown at all yet between this display and any marketing effort of Microsoft anywhere in the world.
Right.
So far. So I don't know how we would get there to make that connection.
And then as I, as I said yesterday, in just in experiencing the sign, especially when you go there at night, so you get the contrast of all of the lights and everything like that, your eyes are going to all of the computers dancing on the wall on the video screens that are on the sidewalks and way back in the store. So if anything is, is doing the advertising, it's those video walls. So I don't actually understand why, you know, the department, not to say that I'm encouraging it, but like, why, why isn't the department going after those kinds of things where in many, many, many stores, you see way back in the store, active video screens that are actively telling you about product? And so, I mean, it's almost like a waste. What's that thing up there doing, competing against all of those little jumping computers and things like that? It, it's actually competition. It's sort of a visual overload. You almost need to look at that culture wall in order to calm your eyes down because it's moving slowly and it's kind of pulsating slowly and, or at least the ones that I watched. I don't know if they have fast.
Um, we, um, just, in this case, uh, in, in prior years, um, the department had felt that anything visible from the street, um, would be located in a window because of the, um, visibility and the jumpingness of the interior screens. But, um, our position has since changed, and we're really focusing on the storefront, um, at this point.
On the storefront? What do you mean by storefront?
The storefront, um, so for Microsoft, we have the, um, just, uh, a traditional, um, yeah, the storefront, the, the street part, so, like, the front.
The actual glazing that's installed right there. When I think of a storefront, there's.
The storefront window, where window includes the space, um, behind a window, um, to a reasonable extent. We, we feel that, um, 800 square feet and an eight square feet foot difference, um, it's so miniscule that it is located in a window because, um, the term window, when you actually look it up in the Merriam-Webster dictionary, includes the space beyond a window where merchandise is traditionally displayed. And since this is a retail store, this isn't merchandise. Um, as we've actually heard on the record, it's not merchandise, which maybe it would be a different result if it were merchandise, but it's not. Um, and so we have this display that's in a space at the front of the store that, um, so we think that the eight square, that the eight feet is a reasonable distance, um, for, in a window.
Isn't that kind of arbitrary? I mean, sometimes it's eight, why can't it be 20 feet? Like, if this thing was 20 feet back, it's ginormous. If they were 20 foot back, maybe it would be even better or more visible or something like, what, how do you decide? I mean, the, the thing that is so, let's say, in a funny way, comforting about how the Landmarks Commission deals with regulating signs is, everyone knows, the rule's 18 inches. 19 inches, you're good with landmarks, right? So, and the Landmarks Review Process is extreme. So if you're making a decision to have your, your sign within the 18 inches, you know, get ready to, to work that out, right? Why can't the department just say, it's this number? The nu, and if it's 20 feet back, how does it justify it, right? And when I think of it, it's because these regulations were written a really long time ago. The classic store window, the vitrine, was like Bond with Tellers. It was, you know, Saks Fifth Avenue, it was all of those things. And it was similar to the Uniqlo story where there's a mannequin dressed in the clothing, and behind there's an image of a ski resort or whatever, and the mannequin's wearing a ski outfit. And that was, that was what store window displays were. And this idea of extending the definition of store window displays to the point where they're not window displays anymore, they're just stuff that's in the room. How can you regulate stuff that's in the room? And why did you regulate that stuff that's in the room and not the other stuff that's in the room?
Well, then, uh, we did discuss the Uniqlo case and, um, obviously discussed whether it was still applicable, um, or a good interpretation. And we feel that, um, as you said, because of the traditional layout of a store window where you have mannequins, and then you have a backdrop, that it would be over-inclusive to include a display, um, that is positioned, um, behind a mannequin.
No. Why over-inclusive? It's part of the storefront. So in the traditional store vitrine, you, like, you always have the thing you're selling, and behind it either more things you're selling, or some kind of a poster that says a little something about what you're selling, or to set the stage for what it is you're selling. They're connected installation. So over-inclusive, I don't actually even understand that. It's, they're, they're totally connected to each other. The window designer designed that as a cohesive whole. There is totally a nexus between the ski outfit she's wearing and the mannequin is wearing and the ski res, you know, gestade in the background. So, yeah.
I think I said yesterday that it, it appeared that the way D O B analyzes some of these cases was very subjective, and that really bothered me because, as you said, you know, how do you determine, you know, what is close enough to that window? If I had a big enough display like this one, and I set it 20 feet back and I didn't put anything in front of it, you might say, okay, yeah, it's still, you know, it's still within the window, it's, you know, a sign of some kind. But as soon as I put something in front of it, it's now, you know, just something in the room that's no longer the same as that sign. So I, I agree with the chair. It would be really nice if we could have some definitive, um, way of looking at this that everybody, you know, who is going to analyze the situation could come up with relatively the same answer. Because it, it's the way that it appears that it's being analyzed, um, is, is somewhat subjective depending on who's kind of looking at it and who determines whether or not the one thing in front of this object now disqualifies it from, you know, the, in a window. It's, it seems a little arbitrary.
And to carry that point, let's just say, again, you're a business owner with a significant art collection, or you're a business owner who wants to promote the arts because that's part of, you know, you could say, like Kenneth Cole, for example, they had that whole sort of political series, and Benetton had a political series. And it wasn't really advertising their product, it was making political statements, right? Well, let's just say you have somebody, you have an entrepreneur who wants to promote the art world, and they want to install. the art world and they want to install important works of art in their stores. And it's unrelated to what they're selling, but they want to have, the public have an opportunity to be exposed to important art, so let's just say video art. They need to understand that if they put that video art in the store at a certain distance, they're cool. And if it's too close to the window, whatever that distance is, they're not cool. Because by the way, these are enormously expensive installations. And the idea that they install it and then the buildings department says, hmm, if I do the logarithmic analysis, it's a little too close because it's big, therefore it's a sign, therefore you can't have it, therefore that multimillion dollar installation has to go, that's actually doing a disservice to the business community, which is not what regulation should be about, right?
It doesn't have to go. Why couldn't they just put it perpendicular?
Because the, our office intended to be seen head-on and-
And I, I agree with everything that the chair and vice chair are saying, but I think that what you're getting at is there needs to be predictability.
Yes.
You know, in order for business to function, there needs to be predictability. And I just wanted to add that, you know, I feel that the signage industry and advertising and video displays, the industry is morphing. And I think what the problem is here is that DOB is using an old definition and instead of looking at it, looking at regulation in a new way, they're trying to stretch an old definition to actually control for current and future situations. And I think that you need to approach it differently. I think if it's, if there is a nuisance with video display that DOB is trying to regulate, they are probably in a, they would be in a better position if they look at a different way to regulate the video display and not take a signage definition and stretch it and morph it to encompass video displays. If the nuisance is brightness or flashing or disturbance at night, maybe the department needs to go into the direction of regulating brightness or flashing, but not take an existing signage definition and go, it's in a window, well, that's 400 feet away, but it's so darn bright, it might as well be in a window. So for this case, we're gonna say this one's in a window, whereas that one's five feet from the window, but it's really kind of dim and you really can't see at night, so we'll say that's an art installation. That doesn't work, that doesn't provide predictability for anybody. Doesn't even provide predictability for your employees. I can't even imagine how your employees can implement a restriction like that. So I, I think that the department really is going in a, in a direction that's not going to serve it very well.
And I think, I mean, just to clarify, you know, what we've done, we're bifurcating the conversation into two parts, right? One conversation is if it were a, a sign in terms of the nexus between the content of the sign and the, what's sold on the site, then we'd look at whether it's regulated because it's in a window, right? So right now, we're having a conversation about whether it's in a window, but we haven't gotten to the place where it's a sign because of the nexus, right? So we first had to get there before we got to whether we can regulate it in a window. And I think that there is, you know, to Commissioner Otley Brown's point, it can't be this sort of haphazard arbitrary, what, sorry, feeling arbitrary determination that if it feels like it's in a window, it must be in a window, right? I think it would be, and I agree that this illumination issue, I didn't realize there weren't illumination standards because long ago, the zoning resolution directed the department to create them. So it's surprising to me that there isn't that. Sounds like an, like an emergency call, please create lighting illumination level standards.
Well, they're, they're still in the works because of the technical aspects of creating such a rule.
Yeah.
Because we have a noise code, you can have an illumination code, which would impact signs and video displays.
Right. Would eliminate a lot of the complaints because the complaints often have to do with the brightness of it.
Well, as, sorry, as to the marketing, a lot of their, we still, okay, so a lot of what they're proposing is about New York City and they have the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade and New York-based artists. And the Journal of Fashion Marketing and Management said that if retailers tailor their windows to the city's individual personality, that's New York City, consumers may like the window display more because they identify with the image, which may increase their purchase intentions. And so there is a reasonable nexus that they're using their location-specific imagery, which is what they're proposing, although, again, I, it is in my client's best interest not to be regulating the content of signage, but insofar as there's a concern about advertising and whether pretty photographs of the Philharmonic and the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade is actually marketing, it is.
I think, because I'm not getting the nexus of what is being shown and, and on the screen. Let's say somebody's showing Macy's fireworks on the screen, but what's being sold on the site is not fireworks.
Or Macy's.
Or Macy's product, it's completely different.
Or Turkey's.
Again, it's the nexus part I'm not getting.
Well, every, every circus-
I, I understand that that's a market, that's, there's so many ways of interpreting psychological analysis of this, but I'm not getting that direct link.
And counsel, the board sort of rejected that line of reasoning in the Bravo decision when the argument was made that Bravo was a sort of vague reference to the theater district, which was near the, the Bravo installation. And the board said that that actually didn't establish that nexus, that it needed something more. And I believe it was you who came up with the branding argument, which was what sort of went down.
Which was not based on the content of the display. I don't know.
No, but that's because you found the branding argument, right? It wasn't, in the end, it wasn't content-based. But I mean, in this case, for example, obviously, it's, it's the, the success of this video screen and its ability to continue to operate is, is very much dependent on it being operated. The way the appellate has represented it will be operated, which is that it will continue to be an art wall programmed by people unrelated to Microsoft and not displaying anything that's related to product, right? So, but, you know, that could mean that they, for example, they purchase videos by famous artists. I mean, it's actually an amazing opportunity, a public art forum opportunity to show the public video art, which is not seen that often, unfortunately, because there's not that many venues for it. And, you know, and I think that's consistent with New York's character, that we see publicly displayed art made available to the public by private owners, so.
Well, um, this is-
Okay.
Oh, and just for the 10-foot thing, which I guess isn't relevant anymore, this basically says, this is, oh, no, this is actually about advertising and it basically just says that a lot of advertisements don't include any text.
But they have a big Kodak underneath and it's selling photographs.
I thought they also have a Microsoft under there.
No, but it's not. The Kodak underneath is selling film and it's showing you Kodachrome and Kodacolor and all that, and look at the amazing photographs you can take with our film. So if it had been, for instance, the iPhone, right? Look at the amazing photograph you can take with the iPhone. That's a whole marketing campaign they're doing, so that's different. We already had this discussion about that. And it seemed, it appeared that Microsoft doesn't have that kind of a product nexus. I didn't know that because I'm an Apple person. But the, but it doesn't have, it doesn't have that kind of nexus and I didn't realize that until the appellate made that clear to us and I, the department would have needed to prove the opposite, like you did with Bravo, so.
Well, they do sell phones and they sell tablets and all of their advertisements for the Surface tablet includes arbitrary images. They also pioneered the arbitrary desktop image back in the early 90s, which we know as wallpapers. And so the fact that you've been using a computer for decades with random art in the background, I, I would say is enough to create a nexus to Microsoft Corporation.
So you're saying it's like a background screen? You know, like a wallpaper screen?
It's a digital wallpaper.
That suggestion would say that, so the Microsoft, sort of the ubiquity of Microsoft, which we've all touched something Microsoft today 10 times, right? And that would preclude Microsoft from ever having any sort of visual display in any store-
Well, they can't, they can't-
Because it's just, it's, it's Microsoft, right? So everything is related to something Microsoft has done on a screen. It, it seems a little tricky.
Well, I mean, the aesthetic nuisance is the illumination, so I see no reason why they can't use the dropdown screen that they've invented to cover this to put non-illuminated imagery.
The dropdown screen, sorry.
In front of, sorry, in front of this-
Well, they're not required to.
But why, why-
If, if they don't have to, that's why.
Yeah, and why then that was not required for the Uniqlo sign that also has these large displays with LED panels that change color, that have random shapes that are not related to their product? But why, why weren't they asked to provide a shade in front also?
Well, not a shade, I was just suggesting-
Or non-illuminated, the same, same, same thing that you're requiring, why wasn't that required there?
Because of the arrangement of the window display where-
So I get, I get, this goes back to that question that you raised, is an inconsistency in the way this is being applied? So that's the second part of this.
The analysis should come up with sort of the same answer across the board and it doesn't. And, and I think that that's what I'm particularly struggling with, is that looking at similar installations, coming up with, you know, a different outcome. So I, and, and clearly here, you know, I, I have not yet seen that there's a nexus between sort of this image and anything that really Microsoft does. And, you know, counsel brings up a very good, you know, question. If that, you know, everything that we've touched today is a Microsoft product in some way, would that mean that, you know, any company such as Microsoft that develops or, you know, does computer work or, you know, anything of, of a display nature would never be able to have an illuminated anything in, in, within eye shot of, you know, the front window? That to me is a little squishy.
Which is why we focused our effort, our submissions on the retail aspect of the store because a lot of retail stores in general incorporate video displays. And, and so they can, they could have gotten a retail store in Times Square, but they didn't. They could have gotten one right next to the HP store, but they didn't. They put it on Fifth Avenue. If they really wanted this one, they could have located elsewhere, but-
I don't understand that. Fifth Avenue is a major retail zone. Why would they make that?
But they're not allowed to have illuminated signage at all.
But it's, we don't think it's a sign.
Yeah, so that's the thing. It's not, it has to be signage first before you look at whether it's illuminated. We didn't get to signage. And if, if I were, if I were concerned about the brightness of anything, it would be those perpendicular signs that are much brighter on the street, even though they're set back 15 feet or something from the window wall or 10, I'm not sure exactly what. But like I said, when I stood there for a long time, my eyes went to those because they're so much more active, they're so much brighter. They obviously use some different kind of a technology to give it that intensity of light. And then if you just look, I think it's the Armani store, it's the one that's just up the street on the northeast corner-
Yeah, yeah.
-corner where there are set back from the window wall, five feet or something, these large monoliths where the fashion models walk the runway. And I could see that easily from this corner, so.
And you see this, you see that, that same example, actually. If you go one lot east, all along Madison Avenue-
Yes.
That's all you have now are these big video screens sitting, you know, from one foot away from the window to, you know, all the way back. And it's, it's all about displaying the clothing and, you know, the, the models. And so, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that the analysis is-
Right. So I, and I just think, to just wrap this up, that the, I think the final point of this is it sounds like the real problem is that illumination is the problem and the, the department is trying to use a zoning resolution to regulate illumination instead of regulating illumination, which the department has the authority to do. So it should just do that. It will cure lots and lots of ills with respect to illumination that's occurring more and more all over the city.
This could be as bright as possible if it's not a sign and the rule wouldn't apply.
No, illumination as a nuisance, like noise, like-
No, we have the authority for signage, so if, if this is not signage, then the rule would never apply.
Well, you could, any, any lighting or any-
Any lighting that projects outside of the building.
Yeah, you, you have like a little candlelight meter and it's like, if it's a certain distance from the store, it's over this many lumens, it's, it's not in the regulation. It's not permitted because of nuisance.
To dim the entire city.
No, that's on, this is a resolution, they regulate everything.
It's like the noise code.
The noise code, right. The vibration, well, they don't have vibration code. They have, right?
I believe that would definitely require like a local law to authorize the Department of Buildings to dim the entire city. Oh, sorry, but as far as what we're-
Energy code, could be under the energy code maybe.
It, it would require a local law.
Okay.
But as far, this would, for any illumination standards for signage, this would just slip through the cracks and they could put it up on full blast and the church across the street would be a Hollywood set.
But you know what I have to say? If we just move that wall back 20 feet, to make it clear, it's 20 feet back, and you, and you up the volume on the lighting, you could have the same impact on the street. I'm not saying that they should do that or anything, you could have the same impact on the street. So either DOB figures out how to create a local wall that regulates the amount of illumination that is, that is emitted from a structure, but you can't rely on zoning that's regulating, regulating a different thing to do the job of nuisance codes. That's really what this is about. This is regulating a nuisance.
But what are the structural characteristics of this display that are different than the marquee besides the weathering?
The marquee isn't-
The marquee.
We aren't going to whether or not that's a sign, right? So we'd have to have another discussion, we'd need to know more. So we don't know whether that's a sign.
It is the most-
It's temporarily not signed and eventually will become a sign, I don't know. So, okay. Are there any other speakers on this? Okay, so I think what we will do is we'll close this.
Can we keep it open?
Yeah, you're right. Sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Could we keep the record open for one more submission?
Yes. So what we can do is we'll close this and we're gonna give you a really tight briefing schedule and a tight limit on the number of pages in the brief because we don't want to go back through all of this. Okay, so 10, I think we limit the briefs to 10 pages and two weeks each. So I, I think that actually Jade want to respond to DOB's submission. So DOB submits first in two weeks and then Jade, two weeks after that, and then we'll set a decision for two weeks after that. Okay? All right, so two weeks from today. Jade, did you want to add something?
I just want to point out, I know this is unnecessary, but we close our store at nine o'clock at night and our video, our culture wall closes at that point. There have been no complaints that we're aware of from any neighbors. So whatever complaints there have been about Topshop shouldn't really be all that relevant lest people think that, that people are screaming at DOB about our cultural, we haven't heard anything about that.
Are you sure that the culture wall actually closes down at nine?
Yeah, there's, there's panels.
Not, not, no. I've, I've walked by there later than that.
And actually, the, the store hours-
Sir, either get up and speak or just whisper.
Just an observation.
Stay safe.
I'm sorry, Michelle Gerhardt from Microsoft, thank you for the opportunity to clarify the point. You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
The hours of operation for the cultural wall are different than the store hours, and they vary. So I don't know, I don't have the exact hours, we can go ahead and submit that.
Slowed after nine o'clock.
So you guys have it, but yeah, it's open.
Yeah, I think I have to. Can you clarify the hours and?
I will do that, yeah, we'll go ahead and we'll get that information to you. Thank you.
Just some housekeeping. DOB, would you mind submitting the PowerPoint presentation that you gave today, just for our record? Thank you.
So, did you want to say anything else?
No, but just that, I was a little surprised by this submission, because we had a hearing on March 8th, we submitted on March 30th, DOB's submission was due three weeks later, they asked for an additional two weeks. We gave them the two weeks. And then our submission on May 4th didn't have any new information, it was a page. So this is all new things that, for example, this 2012 report from the fashion modeling about marketing is available, the 2007 court decision was available. They had all this information available, and I think it should have been submitted. And I think the board is very gracious in giving them additional time to yet make another submission. Hopefully this is the last.
We closed, so this is the last.
Is that 10 pages including exhibits?
Actually, yeah, it should. I think 10 pages including exhibits, so you can cut in case the images, right, on the 10 pages.
It's a summation of arguments.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a summation of the argument, and we don't want to read a 40-page new analysis and all of that. And ideally, it covers the issues we covered today.
And we will submit two weeks later?
Two weeks later. So the first submission then for DOB will be the 28th of June, that's two weeks from today. And your submission would then be the 12th of July for a decision on August 2nd. What?
Is there any chance of, any chance of making a week before that? I'm planning to be away that week.
You want to submit on July 5th?
I was talking about your decision.
Oh, decision, you want to be what?
I'd like to be here for us.
You want it to be the following?
No, no.
The week before.
Is that possible?
We have July 10th and August 16th. We don't have a hearing on the 26th or on the 9th.
You don't have one like that?
No, so your choice.
Okay, then it is.
August 2nd.
August 2nd it is. I'll be here.
August 2nd, and you'll send a necessary.
Got it. Thank you, I'll make, thank you.
Motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice President Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
You want a break? Are you going to be on vacation?
She'll be on vacation.
Is anyone else going to be on vacation? Because we can't have, like, two.
New cases out of number 10, 260, 261, 115A, 122, 133 Bard Avenue, Staten Island.
Is everybody okay? Anybody need a break?
This one's going to be really boring, so if you want.
No sign?
Compared to the last one, yeah.
This one's not so boring. It's actually quite interesting.
Oh, compared to the technology, it's just that. Eric Palatnik, the counsel's advising me to quit while I'm ahead. Good morning, Eric Palatnik. Good advice, sorry, sage's advice, counsel. We attended your review session yesterday, and I heard your comments, and if it leaves the board, I'd be happy to go through what we heard and then give you the answers that we compiled, and then come back to anything we may have missed or mischaracterized. The very first question I think the board had is, if we're building house number 130, that's the one in the back, there's the two in the back, there's one on the left and the one on the right, the one on the left is 130, the one on the right is 122. We are building all four homes, including the two in the rear. The home to the left in the rear was removed from the application number 130, because the architect had meetings with the deputy borough commissioner in Staten Island, as well as the plan examiner in Staten Island, both of whom advised him that due to current interpretations of the GCL, that the home that has the driveway to it, 130, it's in fact a driveway, not a street, and because it has a driveway, 130, that runs darkly upon the street, in the eyes of the Department of Buildings, it would not require a general city law application. So they haven't put that in writing for us, we've been trying to get it in writing, but that was verbally took advice of the architect, and he's confident enough to have withdrawn that from the application.
And that was the reason, I would assume, why you didn't go straight up the middle of the lot? Because then you would have needed two GCLs.
Yes, but I don't know if that was the reason, but we're happy to be here, we're here for one GCL, but.
But then, as someone mentioned yesterday, that makes one of the lots really inadequate.
That goes right, so that's the other question the board raised yesterday. It's one zoning lot, it's been designed as one zoning lot. So all four homes are on one lot, one zoning lot, and so it's compliant with all the district regulations. I think the question that the board had.
Well, the 30-foot wide lot.
Right, the 35 minimum lot width, correct.
The 30 foot, sorry. But you could have just gone right up the middle and had four.
Yeah, probably could have.
Equal lots.
If they did originally.
Which would have been more compliant with zoning, perhaps.
Yeah, I'm not, that's what the question is. This was reviewed by DOB, and they found that that 35, it meets the 35-foot frontage requirement?
Yes, it's fully compliant with zoning for the Department of Buildings.
Well, what about the distance between buildings? I don't get that.
The distance between buildings, that's going to, I think it was section 23-711 was the board's question. Eric Palatnik again. 23-711 only speaks to the distance between buildings for required windows. There are no.
Wall-to-wall distances.
It's, no, it speaks to, the text of it speaks to, shall vary according to the height of, and the presence of legally required windows. I realize you don't have it in front of you, but if you could pull it up, but 23-711, we could give you a little bit of a blurb on it after the hearing, more from the architect. But when I spoke to him last night, he advised that 23-711 would only kick in if it was legally required windows that were facing each other.
So they're not putting any windows on those sides?
On those sides facing each other.
They're using.
They're ventilating outs to the exterior of the lot. So because of that, the 20 feet is sufficient.
But we don't know all the conditions of all the sidewalls, you know? We're basing it on what you're telling us.
Yes, but again, we're not asking you to vary it, we're going to Department, we're just asking for the general city law, we're not asking for any zoning rule.
No, but at the same time, we're looking at compliance with the zoning, because that's one of the things we do.
Well, that's one of the things you do.
And part of the problem is also that when there's an approved set of drawings from the BSA, sometimes plan examiners view that as a blessing of other things that are not part of the approval process, so we need to make sure that we're clear. So wall-to-wall, that's the one.
What is the zoning resolution section you refer to?
The wall-to-wall, minimum building.
23-711, standard minimum distance between buildings. 23-711.
It says wall-to-wall, the minimum distance for the building is, what's the height of the building?
35?
30? So then it would be 25, it says. There is a regulation for wall-to-wall, it's not just wall-to-wall. So.
Wall-to-wall is a condition where two walls face each other, and neither wall contains a legally required window.
Right, so we need to make sure, because I don't know what the actual, do we have a height information on these?
Well, not for those particular, we only have information on one home, the one in the back corner.
Okay, so you need to verify that it complies with the wall-to-wall condition, if that's what it is? And it says specifically, wall-to-wall condition is where two walls face each other, and neither wall contains a legally required window. Wall-to-window is a condition where two walls face each other, and one wall contains a legally required window, and the other wall is not. So I don't know what the situation with legally required.
Yeah, but then it says the wall-to-wall, I'll ask the architect, because it says wall-to-wall is 20 feet.
20 or 25, depends on the height of the building.
Yeah, so we'll check.
I thought the building is 35 feet high, aren't these two-story?
I believe they're three stories. I believe it's three stories.
So they're at least 35 feet.
Well, it depends on how you do the base.
I'll ask the architect to clarify that section.
And then, you know, legally required, obviously, if you have a 10% opening requirement for the bedroom, is it all being achieved facing the rear?
Is all the ventilation being achieved, you're asking?
All the 10%, window requirement being achieved in that bedroom directly facing the rear.
And then the side yard setbacks for the rear homes is, I believe, also dependent on the window or wall to the property line requirement, so you should show compliance with that also.
Right.
Could you, speaking of side yards, could you just explain for me that, it might be just that you misplaced a note, but it appears you've got sort of this little.
Lot 110?
Foot.
Lot 110?
Yeah.
One on the right.
So can you?
That's the, they should, probably should have had a note which we'll put on there, that that's serving as the side and rear yard for that, for that home.
Yes, but this lot is a separate tax lot.
Yes, but it's part of the same zoning lot.
Right, and who does it belong to?
Well, I don't know, I do not know who it belongs to, I could find that out.
Right, because the thing of it is, is that if this is to be kept as the setback, right? You don't want this guy who's now buying this house here to say, ooh, I can like build in there, and like, nobody really owns this, and gee whiz.
We'll get clarity for you.
Right, it's, they've created this little.
That little sliver?
Little sliver.
That's not included in the application.
That's not in this guy's lot, it's a different lot. It appears that it's a different lot.
Well, it looks like it, but then they wouldn't have a side yard.
I know.
The architect advised.
This is the point.
It was a good point. The architect advised that it is a part of our zoning lot, it's serving as a side in the rear yard.
Yeah, but it's not, it's a separate tax lot, and you've got to tell me how you're treating that separate tax lot.
Why is it a separate tax lot?
Yeah, it makes no sense.
Is it a right-of-way? It's like, it's something that's part of the Property Owner Association, where everyone will go off there, therefore it's under, like, why would you do that?
Why would you do it?
Understood.
Because if it is your setback area, and it has to remain open and clear, then you better have some way of keeping it that way if it doesn't really belong to anybody, which is kind of silly, the reason.
We'll clarify that for you.
Okay. And then, there's the question of, you know, the community board was against this because of the tandem spaces.
Well, yeah, the board, the community board is really against it, because we were knocking down, you know, bucolic site and replacing it with, in their mind.
Tore down a bucolic site.
We tore down a bucolic site, and are putting up four homes, so they didn't, they don't like the fact that there are four homes going in there.
But they also, it's a legitimate concern, there's three parking spaces.
That's all acceptable by Department of Buildings, this is all Staten Island Department of Buildings, it's all fully acceptable. They consider the spot in the garage to be a separate spot, and then the one in the driveway.
Even though you have to pull out the other two cars?
Yes, fully acceptable, common practice in Department of Buildings in Staten Island, and routinely approved.
So then how do you deal with the fact that you've got, well, we'll get the fire department to comment, but it means that all of the cars are going to end up pulling into the fire area, the fire turnaround access area, and parking, where they're not going to be allowed to park?
Well, they're not going to necessarily park, cars are shifted around all the time. This is routinely, this is, we're not asking for anything different. The roadway is a fire department access, it's also a private driveway, this is shuffling of vehicles is not uncommon, and we're not asking for any variations of the rules to which we.
Well, you are, you're asking for what's ultimately an obstruction of fire passage, so let's wait to hear from the fire department about that one. You need to show the location of the no parking signs, and probably indicate, there's some kind of an indicator that there's no parking here, which the fire department will comment on more. And we're also going to need a restrictive covenant on not allowing parking.
Again, this is, it's a private driveway, it's not a homeowners association.
Yeah, but it's a private driveway where you don't have frontage.
Right, but the restrictive covenant is, why would there be a restrictive covenant?
There's a right-of-way.
Usually that would apply to homeowners association.
No, so there's a right-of-way, everybody has access to that.
The two homeowners do.
The two homeowners have access. So neither of them are allowed to park in the area that the fire department deems as a fire.
No, of course, no, that we understand, but I don't know if a restrictive declaration is the way to achieve it.
So those are covenants against the properties that indicate that the properties, you can't park there, and that they're, whatever the penalty is, we have to work that out when there's no homeowners association, or when there is.
Yeah, there's no homeowners association.
Issues enforcement.
Issues enforcement, maybe we give.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm going to, this is sort of, it usually applies, the homeowners association would be utilized if there was numerous people involved, but here you just have theoretically two unit owners that are controlling it, so it's enforceable.
But if they're not put on notice in any way, if there's no notice.
Well, they have a certificate of occupancy, it could have a note on it, of course, they could be put on notice. I just, putting a restrictive declaration really just puts the burden.
Where one home was behind another, and it was a long driveway, and I think they gave us a restrictive covenant.
Each of the owners can enforce against the others.
Yeah.
It's sort of awkward for neighbors, but it's still.
Yeah, I would say it's more like, you know, sort of there, it's an easement to access this road for each of them, and the easement will have a condition that says, you know, you can access the road, but you can't park on it. And then I can enforce against you, and you can enforce against me, I mean.
Also, like, someone, isn't someone going to be responsible for plowing this in the winter? You know, so that there is access?
Yes, the homeowners will be keeping the driveway clean.
How do they do that?
They may just like shovel a little pathway to their front door.
How do you maintain that it's going to be?
You could put the snow patrol police out there and get them. But this is common.
Every time a really good joke is told.
Or a bad joke. A bad joke would be better.
It's our censorship system. Okay, all right, well, let's have the fire department.
Well, I have some other comments.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. The driveway doesn't show that you're going to comply with the fire code regarding the construction of the roadway.
Yeah, nobody knew what you, nobody knew what you meant by that.
You know, you look at the fire code, they have, you know, a certain amount of, it has to.
The surface.
Be capable of a certain loading. Yeah, and it has to have a certain construction. The front steps encroach into the fire access lane?
That's being amended right now. The plans are undergoing review with the fire department right now, there's an amended set of plans in front of them right now, and.
So your, our plans did not comply with their plans.
Correct, that's, and that'll be changing very shortly.
And zoning regulation 2564, where you take the buildings and you take the rest of the lot.
50%.
Yes.
Yeah, we spoke to the architect about it, the calculation's going to be on the updated site plan, it does comply with the 50%. It wasn't on, there was no calculation on the plan, but we asked them the question after.
Really, with all that?
Yeah, they say it complies.
So you'll put the calculation on?
Yeah, we'll put the calculation on, and you'll be able to see it, and we can discuss.
So the way you're interpreting open space, it's the extension of the building that goes all the way to the rear, that, that's what you're considering open space, and within that open space, there won't be any parking provided? Is that how it's being interpreted? That's how I'm reading.
You're talking about 25622?
No, 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 I'm talking about.
2564, excuse me.
64, 2564.
Yeah, I'm not sure how they did the calculation, I don't want, I can't tell you.
Okay.
Because I don't know.
Because there's an awful, awful lot of paving and parking.
Yeah, that's hard to actually believe.
Right.
There's teeny little boxes of not driveway.
You'll put the calculation.
We'll put, we'll show you. I'll show you. I don't know the answer, so, I did ask the question, and I was told unequivocally that they didn't.
Oh, I had a question.
Architects make mistakes.
What, we make mistakes?
I said architects, not architects and lawyers combined. I said architects, not architects and lawyers combined.
I had a question with regards to section, compliance with section 25-622, it's the location of, I'm sorry.
Is the curb cut question, or the driveway?
So, a zoning lot with at least 33-foot of frontage, access to all parking spaces through a front yard shall only be through a driveway that is no more than 20 foot, 20 feet wide, that's the resolution, and according to the plans, the total width of the driveways is far exceeds 20 feet.
Right.
I want to know how that is meeting the regulation.
The first, I had posed the same question to the architect and took a look at it, the architect is of the belief that it's not cumulative, the regulation, that it's 20 feet per driveway, and that was the main answer that was provided, we could give you more information and we could discuss that further. The other response was that it only applies to the driveway, the driveways in the front yard, which in this case would be the two that are up at the front of the property, they're fronting on Bard Avenue, it wouldn't be the two in the rear.
What do you mean, 20 feet per driveway, this is, these are, this is one zoning lot?
Yeah.
Per driveway, what?
You have 50 feet of driveway, you have three driveways.
You're talking about the width of the driveway, you're not talking about the length, so the three, the question I think that the board is asking is how can we be taking advantage of being one zoning lot and then separating it on the driveways, is that really the question?
The way I'm understanding it is that the drive, the width of a driveway on a zoning lot shall be no more than 20 feet, and your, your statement seems like it's per driveway, so if I had multiple driveways, as long as width of each one of those driveways does not exceed 20 feet, then it's okay, which to me doesn't seem to make sense, because the whole intent of this text was to ensure that we will not have multiple driveways on a zoning lot and, and kind of completely erode a sidewalk, so I don't think that was the intent.
So I'd say step one on that one and on some of these other ones is to have the architect go back and look at this, but the other is that we would need a reading from DOB because this doesn't feel right.
We'll get to the bottom of it and give you clarification on both, on that question.
A lot of this is feeling like it's, by retaining it as one zoning lot but subdividing it into four tax lots, there's subversion of the intention of the zoning regulation.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any subversion, it is being designed, the intent is to design in compliance with the zoning resolution as it's, you know, been allowed on the island in conformity with it, so, you do raise some good questions, the 2564, I'll get you the calculations, 25622, we'll get you the answers to that, we'll give you the answers on the 23711, whether it's wall-to-wall, we'll talk about the 10% ventilation, and we'll show compliance with the side yard setback at the rear, so, you've asked a lot of good questions all related to the zoning of it, when I spoke about it with the architect yesterday and I raised all these questions, he was very strongly opinionated that he is designed in compliance with the zoning, and he's kept saying to me, telling them that I'm not trying to violate anything from zoning, and I explained the conversation we just had, so, there's every desire to comply, but we'll get you, we understand all of this, questions.
So has this been approved by DOB except for the objection on the GCL waiver? I mean, were there, for instance, were there ZD1s on-
I don't think there's any ZRD1s, but I'll find out the status of DOB review.
Because, that's the thing, we'd not need to know that those specific questions have been asked. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Can we hear from Mr. Scududo, Fire Department?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner Anthony Scududo for the Fire Department. It's really just definitions that seem to be the issue here, this is a fire department access road, so it's not a driveway, it has to be cleared in the winter months, a restrictive deck seems like a way to go, at least it requires the maintenance of that area and it obviously will require clearing it in terms of snow, the legalities obviously is not my forte, but it's not simply a driveway and it's not something that can be just, you know-
Sorry.
All right?
Yeah, sorry.
Should I get you a drink?
Later.
Anyway, we feel a restrictive deck is necessary and that it should be specific to, to, you know, the entire hatched area, we'll call it.
Okay, and in terms of parking?
There's no parking, the signs are required, the plans that we reviewed, I think ultimately will all be in agreement, but there's no parking throughout the entire hatched area of what we'll call the Fire Department Plan, and enforcement is this ongoing issue that none of us really know how and who is going to enforce this, I don't know that the board has the authority to allow the fire department to enforce it, or-
What if the restrictive covenant granted the fire department the right to enter?
Oh, I, I think that would be acceptable to us, and I think it would be acceptable to my counsel.
Mm-hmm.
We can speak with the attorneys, if you want to.
That's, I think that's something that really they would have to go through, you know, from counsel to counsel, but in terms of, from enforcement and from, you know, a fire prevention issue, certainly as an inspection policy, that would be wonderful, the fire department was given that authority, we'd love to see that, yes.
Just counsel, my counsel will respond to that.
Yeah, okay. And then the other thing is, we have concerns, so you should take a look at the plans about this tandem parking situation where in order to get the car out of the garage, you have to pull the two cars back onto the fire access road, there's like no other way to do it.
It's not, I mean, it's not a fire department issue, but in terms of operational things, yes, it's true, they would have to, you know, that's, you know, it's kind of that self-governing type thing, where these people, if they're going to, you know, park in tandem like that, they have to keep in mind that they can be, or possibly can be summoned if they store cars in the fire access road while they're, you know, they're not additional parking spots, let's put it that way, the tandem parking is not the best solution, but that's, I think, the solution they came up with out in Staten Island in terms of getting two parking spots on a lot.
Right, okay, just a question, are there any situations where the fire department actually issues some kind of summons on cars parked?
We don't have the authority.
Nothing, so what kinds of-
What we can, well, let me say, we can issue, if we're responding in an emergency situation, we can issue a summons for blocked fire department access road, because in the code it does, it is specific that, you know, fire department access roads shall not be blocked, so we have that ability.
Okay.
It's rarely done, but if, as a general rule, if people are parking here, we don't really have the authority to go out and police and to write summonses in practice, but if there was an emergency situation, they would be summoned for blocking fire department access roads.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Eric Palanca, just checking some dates, I heard the conversation, you just, obviously you just started with the fire department, would be completely amenable to giving them access, and if the restrictive declaration is determined that that's the right way to go, then we're amenable to doing that with no parking.
We've done this on some other cases, so you should assume that you're going to be preparing a restrictive covenant or something and exchanging it with counsel here?
We will.
Okay, are there any speakers on this, any others? All right, any other comments from our side? Okay, so we need those things submitted, so we know what to do, right?
We do.
To respond to those zoning questions?
I have the whole list that we just went through a moment ago, and I understand what the board is asking for, if it would be okay, I know the homeowner is anxious to get going, if we could submit this to you in early July, maybe if you had anything available on the 12th or the 19th, maybe the 19th.
Then it would have to be submitted by, I don't think we have enough time, you would have to submit by June 29.
June 29, today is the 14th, it allows us for two weeks, that could be enough time.
Two weeks, really?
Well, the architect is very confident that he's compliant with everything, and I know he has spoken to the buildings tomorrow, so a lot of his questions were-
But in order for us to vote on this, we have to have the covenant signed, so-
We could work on the covenant, I think, while counsel, while after, while the submission is going on, the substantive part of the submission is, the restrictive declaration will be worked on with counsel.
Okay, so I guess we could set this for July 19, please go. No, this is just reviewing confirmation that it complies with all the regulations. My main concern, though, is that some of this, we may not be persuaded that the architect's say-so is enough.
Then I'll bring them to the hearing.
We may need a DOB-
Well, then, yeah, then we'll go back to DOB.
Right, we were going to check to see if there was ZRD1s on this.
Yeah, I'm going to check with the architect, like I was trying to communicate, I've had a lot, I had a strong conversation with the architect, and he was very, he's a Staten Island architect and he does a lot of work at Department of Buildings, and I said, posed the exact questions the board had, and he said, "Eric is fully complying with zoning." So I'm sure when I go back and I get all these questions, and I know he's been working with Department of Buildings for the past six months or so, trying to knock through some items, so, I'm confident I can come back to you a lot.
Well, maybe, I don't know what the department is like and whether it's very, it's not like, you know, if it were like the Brooklyn Department, then you couldn't do this anytime soon, but maybe it would be possible for him to run this by one deputy commissioner, and just to clarify this quickly, that would make it-
I'd be happy to.
More comfortable, so, I don't know that you can do that that quickly, that, so that's why I'm thinking, maybe-
The island is a little slow, the island, it's not slower, it's just the Department of Buildings is not as jammed up as Brooklyn is.
Right, no, but so maybe, maybe if instead we had a continuation on August 2nd, that would give you enough time to have a conversation with DOB about some of these dicier questions.
Can you give us still July 19th, yeah, I won't be here on the 2nd, I know, but if you could give us still the 19th, we could try, if not, I'll come back in August.
No, but I don't want to do this twice, because then we review stuff twice, right? So, how about this, August 16, and then that should give you enough time to bring up these really, the difficult questions, the one about, I mean, the one about the width of the driveway, I don't feel comfortable that the architect can answer that without specifically asking DOB.
All right, so then I'll, if that's how Madam Chair feels, August 16th is fine by us, or-
Okay, and then-
We're along for the ride.
What was, there was that one, and what was the other one?
The open space.
The open space, 2564 is the 50% calculation, 25622.
Right, no, but those calculations would show whether or not you hit those numbers, whereas the interpretation on the 20-foot driveway, that's not something you can decide based on a calculation, that's something where DOB has to agree on your interpretation.
Okay, so the 16th is good, we can submit a couple of weeks before that.
So August 16th and submit on July 27th? Okay.
Thank you.
You go. Zoning calendar, excuse me, decision items, item number 1130-12BC, 14241 Roosevelt Ave, Queens.
Hi, Eric Palanca.
So before we bring this to decision, I just wanted to make a comment that the reason that we're discussing this at all again is because the court determined that we needed, it instructed us to approve this parking garage on the roof of a building, that's located adjacent to residential uses, but I still believe that the court misunderstood that the BSA is absolutely able to determine a difference between the roof of a parking garage that's adjacent to commercial uses and the roof of a parking garage that's adjacent to residential uses, and that was the reason that the board made the decision that it made, believing that it wasn't appropriate to have this use, but having, in this case, next to residential uses, but having been directed by the court to approve this, we've made every effort that we can to ameliorate the potential nuisance that rooftop parking will have on adjoining residential uses, and to the point of, you know, rooftop parking's the same as parking at grade, if that were true, there wouldn't be such a thing as a special permit where you're supposed to be looking at the impact of the rooftop parking, so I just want to kind of leave that as, as kind of a note, that, you know, kind of, with objection, we approve this, having imposed as many things as we can figure out how to do that will alleviate the impact of the parking on the adjoining neighbors, so, so with that, I propose a motion to grant on condition that the operational plan that was provided is of condition to the grant, that as shown on the drawings, the CMU wall and the existing sidewall shall be stuccoed as shown in the drawings to create a uniform appearance, that the wall that faces the residential building shall be maintained, repaired, and painted as frequently as needed, and that all the planting, which is very serious because the planting is a major buffer source for this, shall be maintained and replaced as needed, so on that motion on condition to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you for deliberation, thank you.
Item number 124415BZ, 145 Central Park North.
We wanted to defer this three months for the Phase 2, and we also need a zoning analysis that implements or that we reviews this in light of the newly adopted ZQA text, so three months would put us, that's mid-September, so September 13.
The hearing, submission date?
It's actually for a decision, yeah.
And a submission date?
It's closed.
Closed, sorry.
And it's the Phase 2 that needs to be reviewed, and so that's-
Just a sign-off.
It's just a sign-off on Phase 2, and then we already know kind of what the effects of the ZQA are, except that the application needs to be modified, so they withdraw some of the waivers requested.
There was a question about-
Oh, okay, sure.
Counsel, did you want to approach on this?
No, 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 this is for the next case.
My fault.
Okay, so, okay, so let's just say submission then, August 24th?
Item number 13, continued hearing items, item number 13, 18813BZ, 20-day at Court, Staten Island.
Good afternoon, Todd Neal, 40, we did submit a letter to withdraw this special permit application, there is the companion appeal application, I don't know if the board wishes to put that back on the calendar and set a date or leave it off calendar, but just as a-
You're amending it, so, you have to amend it to add other buildings.
We are, we are amending it, we're also going to be filing three additional appeal applications, the original plan was for a community facility, a single building, the redesign is for four, as of right, residential buildings, so it would require four separate GCL 36 approvals, I'm just from a point of order, I'm not sure-
We should keep it off the calendar until you're ready to submit.
Keep it off the calendar until you're ready to submit, okay, just as a, just for information, the architect is currently obtaining denials, we're hoping to have those denials by the end of the month, in which case we'll be able to file those other applications.
Okay, so we have to vote on it, we're all, no? Okay, all right, so would consider 188-13-BZ with Contra.
Item number, will we go, you go?
Yep.
Item number 14, 32213BZ, 4201 Main Street, Queens.
Good afternoon, Jordan Most, on behalf of the applicant, so, we're prepared to go, I think, the way I was sort of treating the last submission was that it was sort of for clarification, so we were all on the same page, we'll, I think we'll, if the board is pleased, we'll move forward with that planting then around the interior perimeter, we'll also make sure we get out there as soon as that's done and give you the full sort of panoramic photo of all the interior frontages, so you have a really clear understanding of that, in terms of the condition of the interior of the property, we are, as I've indicated, working on the, I think, I think there's been a sort of meeting of the minds between this off-site parking, we'll modify the restrictive declaration accordingly and move to get that- and move to get that executed, and I think maybe with one last pass through the council's office, once that's signed off, we'll have that, we'll work toward getting that recorded as well.
Okay, great. And has, what's going on with the ALT-1, something was happening?
Right, so that, as obviously I've saved the best for last, that, that, having a, I believe that contact has been made with Mr. Ho, I know the council's office helped with regard to that, and we are, they, my understanding is they are moving toward resolution of that. I know I've been saying that now for some time, and I have made very clear to the applicant that it's got to get addressed, otherwise this isn't going to be able to move forward. So, my understanding is that it, I will try and get you some clarity on that as soon as possible, I'm try, I've been trying to get clarity on that in the past few days as well, but my understanding is they're, they've got a new appointment, and they're moving forward with that, trying to get that resolved.
Okay. With respect to the location of the parking, you need to correct the address, it's not 4225, it's 4235 Main?
For the off-site.
For the off-site parking, which was a source of lots and lots of searching on my part.
Oh, sorry, so
Where the hell's the parking?
You said it's 4235?
Right, 4235 Main, and with the restrictive declaration include the C of O?
Right, that notion that the C of O could be, that the C of O for 4201 Main would be, is that what you meant? I'm sorry.
Well, there's two parts of the C, attach the C of O to 4235 Main, so that that's the place where the parking is located, right?
To update
On the restrictive declaration, attach to it the C of O to 4235 Main, because that's where the parking is located.
To make clear that there's the benefited party and the burden, the burden of benefited COs attached to the yard.
Correct, so that we know that the parking there is legal, because that was part of it, is are we sure we can actually even park here?
Right.
And, and then the other part was add to the restrictive deck that failure to provide the 18 spaces off-site can result in the revocation of the C of O for 4201 Main.
Right, okay, that I understood, right.
Okay, and then we also wanted you pleased to include a site plan to show
We can do that, to show where that is, yes.
That would have made it a lot easier.
Right, I'm sorry, it's right next door, actually, I believe, but we'll, we'll do that, and I've done that on prior applications as well.
Okay. And that's it here for, okay, so, what you should be doing now is installing the planting, and then ideally getting, I think what we should do now is clear up the restrictive deck, get it all in nice form.
Right.
Get the ALT-1 resolution cleared up, and we shouldn't see you again until we have the ALT-1 resolution cleared up.
Right.
And get photographs showing everything is looking beautiful.
And that site.
And then the other thing which was frustrating throughout this application is one set of photographs that shows the entire site outside and inside doing a 360 to show that it's all in good shape, as opposed to a little photo here and then next week and
I understand, one, one comprehensive set out and in.
Right, so no corner left unphotographed, and it keyed to a plan.
Okay.
Okay.
So the, so when, you said you didn't want to see me until
The ALT-1.
ALT-1 is resolved, so
Because it's silly, right?
So
So what do we do? We can, we can set this forward till September, and then you can, you know, submit an adjournment letter if you don't have it by September, otherwise I don't know
Oh, that's fine, then I
I mean, it's lovely to see you, but there's
No, I understand, thank you. No, I think, I was going to say that I would like at least two months, I think, for that to be resolved, so certainly July, August, and then the beginning of September seems like the same sort of timeframe, so
Okay, so let's say you want to set it the next hearing for September 13.
Okay.
And, really, let's put it this way, if you've got the ALT-1 geared up on September 12th, that would be fine.
I understand, right.
But submit all the other stuff
Right.
On August 17th.
Yeah, I'd like to, can I, I think I'd like to push that date if I could.
You want a little more, it was actually August 24th, you need a little more time?
August 24th is better, I think.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Okay, so August 24th to submit, August 13th for the hearing.
September 13th.
I'm sorry, September 13th for the hearing, and if all, the ALT-1's cleared up on September, on September 12th, yay, okay?
Right.
So, I don't know whether we can, we can't close, because we need to see everything installed, right?
I, I wouldn't even ask for that, I normally would seek that, but since I'm not sure exactly the status of that ALT-1.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any speakers on this?
Item number 15, 2414BC, 10602 Sutter Avenue, Queens.
Good afternoon, Sandy Anagnostu, representing the applicant.
So, thank you for resubmitting to clarify the request for two, both the variance and the special permit under 73621 for the floor area increase, I think that clears it up, right? Everybody okay? So, are there any speakers on this? So then I would like to make a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
And for a motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the board for their patience and understanding on this case, thank you.
Item number 16, 18114BC, 670 92nd Street, Brooklyn.
Anybody need a break? We are all good. Breaks, no? It's been going on for a while. Ready?
It's going to be an easy one. Jordan Most, on behalf of the applicant. So there were a number of things that were discussed yesterday, I, I prefer to respond to specific questions, I'm happy to speak to any of these things, but it may be more efficient that way.
It's your show, yeah.
Unless you want to direct me to some
No, 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 your show, go ahead.
Okay. I'm sorry?
It's your show.
Okay, okay, so, one thing that was, was clearly not clear, is this notion of stairs on the first floor of the building. So first, let me just say that we have obviously made a significant change to the building, and that we've removed the fourth floor of the building, and spread the stair circulation space into the side yard that was generally previously free, there were no side yard non-compliances, so now that it's, it enables the building to spread out a little bit, and so there's not as much of a classroom loss, and we're able to lose that top floor. So that's really the primary significant change to the building that's taken place. But what does remain, and was a source of, I believe, some confusion or just not clear, is why all these stairs? There's a, there are two sets of stairs that run from the UPK rooms, which are located in the rear of the building, and then we've also got the main stair, sort of, the main stair circulation, which are now located in the side, also located in the side yard, but toward the front of the building, which access all the floors of the building. So it appears there's some redundancy. The stairs in the rear, actually, they're actually generally there already, those are existing conditions, you'll see that stair on the existing plan set, that's part of what was the old building's access into the side yards, and so, so that's part of the, part of, part of the explanation, but another part of the explanation is that the stairs provide, and then this ties into a number of different issues, is the use of the auditorium space, is that the auditorium space, which is also, which functions as a cafeteria space, it functions as a theater space on a sort of, is it, a temporary stage that can be assembled and placed in that space, there are movable chairs that are placed in that space, which are all stored in the storage space, which I guess we'll get to in a moment as well. So, that, part of the way that this theater space, when it's used as a theater space, that it's accessed, it's accessed in part by staging from the first-floor classrooms. So those stairs, which again are existing stairs, make access incidentally convenient to the theater space by allowing people to prepare and dress and change and do what they need to do to get ready to get down, to what is not an enormous stage space, once a stage is installed in the auditorium space, and the chairs are placed in there, it creates a easy way for students to move freely between the theater space and the, and a staging space, which happens to unfortunately not be on the same floor at the cellar level, but instead is on the first floor using those classrooms.
So then that preschool CR1 and CR2 are like the green rooms, is the concept?
Correct.
I thought that was also one of the UPK classes?
They are, they are.
They are UPK classes.
Okay, but it can be used for, they can double function.
Right, double function, obviously at a completely different time, it would be in a late afternoon or evening time period, so that's, so, and I was just actually discussing, though, with the architect, well, you know, why not put the big stairs all the way back? Then you don't need the stairs in the front, but then the stairs are not in a good location for access to, you really want to have a double-loaded corridor type of situation, where you have a class in the front and a class in the back, and having the stairs located all the way in the rear, the stairs located all the way in the rear doesn't facilitate good access to the building. Again, circulation space is very, is really at a premium in this building, so it's, it creates an awkward situation, and not a very functional situation, having the stairs located all the way in the back.
Well, actually, if you just got rid of those, those odd stairs, and you flipped stair one, so instead of the landing being, going further to the bottom of the page, because I don't know if that's south.
Which, I'm sorry, you're on sheet?
I'm on, for example, I'm on the second, I happen to be on the second-floor plan, because it's where it's clearest what's going on, in terms of the double-loaded corridor.
Right.
If you, if you just simply flip the stair, so that it moves further north on the site, you'd have more open area that's visible from the street, which would reduce the apparent mass of the building, because the bulkheads are always heftier, right? It would be, it would be further back on the site, and you'd have the exact same double-loaded corridor situation.
I understand.
And how many green rooms does a person need? I mean, you've got already a staircase on the other side going down, and you could do even the same thing on stair number two, you could flip it, and then it collects more with that other staircase, and so it reduces the apparent mass of the front of the building.
I understand the value of it, I'll, the architect is here, the, one of the principals of the Greek schools here as well, we can, we can look at that and evaluate that, I understand, that sort of pushing the stair on the other side of the landing in both instances.
It makes sense, you're eliminating two sets of stairs that you really don't
Right, although, for instance, so an implication for doing that on stair one, is that the stair then will actually block the windows on classroom two.
There is, you could still put a window in the rear.
Yeah.
Well, no, that's a block line.
Like classroom three, but the, like classroom three, classroom three has windows in the back, same way classroom two could have windows in the
I think those are, those are sort of compromised windows, can you speak to that, Felix? I mean
No, those are lot-lined windows, compromised, they're lot-lined windows.
Those are
Right?
I think this is also a cost-saving device, by reducing so many staircases, you're actually, it's bringing down the cost, and the maintenance and operation of it.
Well, I think, on the other side, though, so on the other side, flipping the stair doesn't actually, stair two doesn't come into alignment with the existing stair, it, it doesn't eliminate that, it, I guess it's still, there's still a redundancy, if you will.
Where is the existing stair?
But pushing the stair
Where is the, I'm sorry, where is the existing stair?
They're all the way in the back, all the way in the back.
Those are these stairs that just access the cell.
If you look at, if you look at the first floor, I think it's more, I think it becomes much more clear, you can see them all at the same time.
I mean, even with stair two, if you flip stair two, you're still, you wind out in the lobby of the auditorium, but you wind up there anyway on that back stair.
Yeah.
Because you have to come around through the kitchen and come into the lobby, so it's not as if
Yeah, that's not actually a green room stair.
Including, yeah, but I think he was going there, he was saying, well, you're going to have an issue with
Well, we're also not trying to create height, I guess, more height all the way in the back, either, like if you put the, if you put a stair sort of tower on that existing stair, that's already in that back right corner, now you're creating a, a bulk that goes to the roof and to a bulkhead at a corner that's
No, we're not saying you put it out the corner, because then it's not tied tightly enough to your circulation.
To the circulation.
No, it's really just that you're pushing it back.
It's literally flipping it.
So, because part of it is, the apparent mass of the building is from the front, and to the extent that you push these, these elements back
I understand, they become visually more pleasing from the street.
Yes, right. Okay.
So we can, I mean, do you have any objection?
If you do push that staircase back, then, and you're no longer using that rear staircase that goes to the cellar, why couldn't you put the windows along that side, so that you don't have to worry about the windows in the back?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Felix Nambasco, the architect? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, completely hear that comment.
Say that again.
Oh, if you flip this, the staircase two, so that it's further back on the lot, and don't, and no longer have the staircase to the cellar from the preschool class two, then any windows that are disclosed, moving stair two back, you could put in the back portion of that classroom.
That's true.
On the side, yeah.
We'd still maintain our windows for our classroom. On the other hand, if we were, we were to flip the other stair, we would have a problem with the windows, and I think giving that up, the windows for those classrooms, would be really a compromise that, you know, would materially affect the, of the classroom in the back, and lot-lined windows do not really function, you can't open them legally.
Right.
You'd have shutters on them if you want to open them, so, you know, if you want fresh air for the children, you're really limited. I know I have a lot, I know I have a lot-lined window already, but that was a compromise I was forced to make.
But you, but if you just slid that stair one back
Yeah.
As opposed to slip it all the way into the corner, you could, because then you don't need the door that goes out to
The staircase.
That straight staircase.
There might be room on that back
To get a viable window opportunity.
Very small corridor, I don't know if that actually creates a
No, actually, yeah, you have, you have a good amount, because you're really only, you've got five foot for the corridor, plus the rest of the stair, right? So you probably got at least another six or seven feet
A window wall.
Yeah, window wall, so you could, you can manage.
Needs to be looked at.
That's a relatively small window for, for a classroom, but if that's, you know, I mean, it's a compromise, no doubt, it's a compromise.
It's the affecting the massing, right? So we're looking at reducing the apparent massing of the building, and then at the same time, of course, you have to light these rooms naturally, right? So if you could go back and look at this, because we're trying to reduce the apparent massing.
It also, if I may, it also creates some kind of circulation problems in the cellar, because in the cellar, we have the ability to enter that stair and provide two means of egress from the press vault area, whereas if I move it back, I would have to create an underground vault all the way to the stair in the rear. If you look at the stair number one, how it's configured, you can see I tried to accommodate an egress through that stair from that front depressed area.
From the laundry storage area?
Right, right, so that would also provide a sort of problem that may, you know, it would compromise the egress from the, from that portion of the building, you'd have the egress through a space, which is, you know, is not the best situation.
But even if the laundry storage already has egress over, past the women's room up to the main staircase?
Yeah, but there's only one means of egress.
What do you need two means of egress from a laundry room for?
Well, the storage, all, all spaces in a room should have two means of egress.
For storage?
Well, the building probably has two means of egress.
What's this really used for? No, 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 seriously, what's this really being used for? You don't need two means of egress
No, it's going to be, it's going to be storage.
Of boxes?
It's going to be storage, but the, you, the building probably will take the position that, you know, it could be used as something else, and at one time, it's configured that if I'm really, you know, I'm really pressed, I can accommodate the second means of egress. If I move the stair, I won't be able to accommodate a second means of egress from the front portion of this building.
I don't know, I'm sorry, I understand why you need two means of egress from a storage
Because all spaces by law require two means of egress.
That's not correct.
That's, I'm sorry.
You don't need two means of egress from a storage room. Unless, it's a different thing, tell me what it is, tell me
No, it's storage, because it's a storage, it's an occupancy, there's no exception for two means of egress.
A classroom doesn't have two means of egress. A classroom doesn't have two means of egress.
Of course they do. Each classroom has two means of... Into a public hall.
Out the public hall and corridor, right?
So I cannot accommodate two means of egress here if I move the stair back.
Those are occupancies. I don't understand that. Storage isn't... What's the rate of occupancy of a storage room?
With all due respect, there's nothing in law that eliminates or requires for certain types of spaces for two means of egress.
Show me the code where it says you need two means of egress from there. That doesn't make any...
I can actually...
The men's room doesn't have two means of egress.
I'm sorry?
The men's room doesn't have two means of egress.
That's a bad...
So...
Your sidewalk vault storage room doesn't have two means of egress?
Egress is through that area.
You're not allowed to egress through another area.
Yes, you are. You're allowed to egress through one adjacent space.
So then why can't the laundry room...
Egress through the auditorium?
Now I'm egressing to two adjacent spaces.
Or even into the lobby.
I'm saying it's a difficult situation. It's not the best situation for the egress.
Anyway, it's affecting the general massing of the building. I'd say this very strange laundry storage room... What, by the way, why is there...
Such a strange space. The Jordan Most again.
Yeah.
So this is a... So again, I think...
What's the laundry room for in the first place? Why do we have a laundry room?
It primarily functions as a storage room. And that's also what the sidewalk vault is. Currently, the school either rents or uses about, and I think it's discussed in my statement of facts, about over a thousand square feet of space in and around the community for storage of things like chairs, tables, books, theater-related activity. Here, we would need to store the stage when the stage doesn't need to be out there. Scenery, band material. There's a lot of things that are stored spread out throughout the community. And this is an opportunity where we're trying to create roughly about a thousand square feet of storage space, which is in fact a little bit less than the amount of storage space that's used currently by the Greek school at several locations. So we don't see this as a dramatic increase or some...
No, but it's called a laundry room. That's why we keep focusing on that word because we don't understand what in the world use is there for a laundry room in this building?
Sure, okay.
It's like fifteen feet wide by forty-one. That's huge. If you only need a thousand square feet...
State the name for the record.
You've got fifteen by forty-one. Spiro Girolanos, I'm with the Greek School of Plato.
Just for the laundry room and storage area. And that's just, you know, back of the envelope, so...
Well, I'm sorry, the back of the envelope is what?
It says it's forty-one feet. Is that right?
Right.
By fourteen?
By twelve by fourteen or fifteen feet. And then it's not all that. I mean, it's...
I can clear all that up.
Five or six hundred feet.
This is Spiro Girolanos. I'm with the Greek School of Plato. This is a storage room predominantly. We happen to have some laundry equipment in there because we have a Greek folk dance program. Our students learn how to dance Greek and we put on some performances every now and then. And we own a large quantity of Greek costumes that are very expensive and we take care of them. And every now and then, instead of sending them out, we could save a lot of money. We'd rather just wash them there. It's not a laundry space other than for that one specific use. And I just want to add that that's another thing that we need a lot of storage for.
Okay, so, but if you actually needed storage, you've increased the size of the auditorium since the last submission. So there's a little... And your lobby is generous. So arguably, you could, you know, squeeze a little bit of that if you actually needed more storage room.
The auditorium is all... You want to speak to the size of the auditorium?
The auditorium was always an issue for us. It was always small. We currently do all our performances outside in larger performance areas. We just recently had a theater at Severian High School's auditorium, which is huge. We use Fort Hamilton Army Base a lot, also very large. We need a larger facility, a larger auditorium. And we're also using this for cafeteria as well. Now we have the added storage issue of cafeteria tables and chairs and stage and all that stuff. This is actually a very small auditorium for our needs. It actually became a little bigger, which we were happy about, but it's still small. I had sketched out a small stage and a curtain. And once you do that, you really have space for maybe eighty to a hundred people maximum in order to be able to view a small performance. So we really are tight even with these dimensions. And storage is a big issue for us. We actually had gotten permission from the DOT for the sidewalk vault. We thought it would be double in size, but they told us that they are not... We're not permitted to go all the way to the curb. So we're... It's actually half the size of what we were hoping for. We are very tight with storage space and also auditorium space. It was a blessing to get a little more from the last design, although the classrooms became less and smaller. It was a blessing to get a slightly larger auditorium, but we're still very tight with storage and auditorium space.
You already have DOT approval on the vault?
We have DOT approval for the vault. It's subject to Parks Department approval for removal of the tree. And we also have Parks Department approval for removal of the tree.
Could you provide those approvals to us?
Sure.
And does this prevent you from planting street trees?
Does it prevent me from planting?
Right.
In front of this building?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I don't know if seven feet is enough.
Because I feel that it's part of the neighborhood character issue.
Yeah.
Since you're in a residential neighborhood, to have those street trees?
All I can say is that to the left and to the right of the property, there are these two massive trees, actually.
Your tree is also very large.
Right. So what I'm saying is that the frontage of the building will not have, but there is one directly to the right. There are a few at the prospect...
Directly to the right on somebody... Opposite somebody else's property.
Correct. So we can look into whether or not they'll allow us to plant trees in a seven-foot space and I'd be more than happy to do so if they allow it.
Well, no, because then it goes to whether or not it's appropriate to have a vault, right? Street trees are part of the character of the neighborhood. And if you're removing the street trees to accommodate a vault, then I'd have to say... This goes again to the subject of the retention of the foundations of this existing building. It seems like the decision to retain those foundations is imposing the hardship on you that is forcing all of these other awkward decisions. And so, you know, not expanding into the side yard in the cellar where you have all that opportunity for storage in auditorium and a better location for stairs and all that sort of stuff. It's because of your decision to retain the foundation walls and instead you're relying on the city to use city property and then not providing street trees, which is part of the character of the neighborhood. It's kind of asking everybody else to compensate for what you could provide on-site. So...
So all I can say to that is we... The DOT, this is something that they give. We asked for it and they approved it. We didn't ask for any special considerations. It's something that they give regularly.
Right, but you're asking for special consideration from us.
From you, right, right. And Parks Department also, they were okay with it. They reviewed it in great length and they were okay with it. The only reason that I can think of that we need... We want to keep this foundation is for cost savings, which are, I think, on the order of half a million dollars. I mean, it's very difficult for us to raise this kind of money. And also, whatever window issues I always thought there were because of this lot-line condition. So cost is a factor.
Oh.
Yeah, cost is a factor. And from the beginning, I was told and the architect can speak a little more about that, but about the implication of having windows on lot line and not being able to open them for a chair for the kids and all that kind of stuff. Those are the two main reasons why we decided, cost and windows, as far as I remember.
But for instance, in your cellar, there's all of this undeveloped, it's kind of oddly utilized cellar area where if you have a storage problem, you could get that from subterranean development, right? You have all... It's like this... I mean, the site plan is very odd.
There's wasted space, I'm sorry?
Yeah, the plan is odd because you've got four staircases that could easily be instead storage area if that's what you need. And then you've got an unexcavated area that could also be storage area. And instead, you're choosing to excavate underneath the sidewalk. I don't get that.
Yeah, it's a cost issue at that because it's a shoring issue. It's underpinning in the back. It's reutilizing the foundation. Already going back, we're getting rid of more of the foundation so we have to build more foundation. Structural engineers reviewed the foundation. It's adequate to support the loads that we want to put on. So we're just trying to save quite a bit of money here on the order of a half a million dollars.
But at what result and impact on the neighborhood ultimately, right? So the neighborhood doesn't get trees. The neighborhood gets kind of odd configuration of a building that's not really taking proper advantage of the site and the waivers that are available, right? So in terms of side yard waivers. And there are ways of working out these lot-line windows. You can sit them in so that you can... You could open them, right? They don't have to be like right on the line, right?
I have a question on the shoring issue that was raised as a reason for not wanting to build. As I'm looking at the site plan, the existing two-story medical building is located seven feet from the property line. And the other concrete building already abuts the existing building. So there is not an additional shoring that would have to be done. It's mostly along the two side lots and there aren't any buildings immediately abutting it within even three feet of it. So I'm not sure where the shoring cost is coming.
Or the underpinning.
Underpinning of it, sorry.
It's the underpinning of the existing foundation, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'd have to underpin the existing foundation, dig down and continue with that down.
I see.
But the real problem would just be at the rear. The real problem would be at...
Just being the rear.
Yeah.
For underpinning, shoring, excavation, new foundation, you have extra classes in the rear. We have a shed to the left. We have a garage structure in the back. And shoring next to adjacent properties, you don't want any movement so you're gonna have to create diagonal and rakers and dead men and all that kind of stuff and new foundation walls.
Well, you could keep your existing walls and just, you know, underpin and excavate below them.
We'd have to underpin the one-story building also.
Right.
The existing walls? But then I thought we were trying to go to the lot.
Well, no, you're just talking about at the rear, right?
At the rear, you have a structure behind our existing walls.
Right.
That's already there.
Well, the... In your side yards right now, all you have are the stairways.
Right.
If you wanted to extend and put some storage area there, you could. I guess that would be part of the idea.
You're saying you brought the foundations all the way to the lot line?
Right, yeah.
And see...
I agree that we can gain space doing that. I'm just saying that it's gonna cost more and it's gonna create a window issue.
But how does it create a window issue if you're talking about storage?
You're still only on a low level, as you're suggesting.
Well, we're starting at the lower level. You're saying you need more storage. You're taking the storage from the vault underneath the sidewalk, which prevents us from having street trees, which is not desirable.
You already have to take out the entire cellar slab and lower it because you currently have a basement instead of a cellar. So you first have to create a cellar, which, you know, you're already doing all that work of taking out the slab and lowering it.
To the level of the existing footings.
Right.
Right.
Which is not a very expensive job.
Just a new slab.
Just a new slab.
Well, when I look at all the excavation you're gonna have to do for that vault, which is much deeper.
That's true.
And underneath the entire frontage of the site. You're excavating, you're gonna have to shore and excavate all that. And that's at a lower elevation than your cellar. And I don't even see how you have enough steps to get from your storage area to the cellar level. It doesn't seem like...
The main concern you're...
It almost looks like a sub-c cellar.
Right. You bring up a good point of the depth. But if we go to the sides, that's an even bigger problem because if we establish that, if we get that depth, the amount of digging and shoring we're going to have to do is huge and very expensive.
Well, it would be somewhere... It would be maybe, you know, whatever the height is above grade. What is that, four feet?
So you're saying to create a half a story... A half a story structure in the side yards above?
No, no, no. Just lower the entire cellar floor four feet so that you enter at grade and extend some of the foundation walls out. So instead of making the sidewalk vault, you can go into the side yards.
That's my point though. That's a very, very expensive job to do because of the amount of shoring that you've got. You've got to shore 13, 14 feet of soil in the neighbors' yard.
You're going to have to shore the entire front yard and the entire sidewalk vault.
Correct, correct. But it's not on property line. It's so much easier to do in the front of the property than it is in the back with the equipment and everything. It's very different and very costly.
To create the storage areas in the side yards, those storage areas would have to be at the level of approximately the level of the existing, a level of front yard storage areas are, which is the floor which is lower than the adjacent floor of the auditorium. So we would need stairs to get into there. So it's not a really simple...
Why would the storage?
Because it would project above grade, otherwise.
No.
Not in the building.
It's not within the envelope of the building. So if we go into the side yard, we maintain a height, a reasonable height in that space and keep the floor level with the auditorium, you would project above the level of the yard.
For instance, the lobby space, the lobby space's ceiling is actually above grade, but you don't sense it or feel it because it's in the building. But if we were only building out into the side yard, it would have to be a lower space than the adjacent floor of the lobby in order to keep it below the grade.
Well, I'm assuming that you're going to have an entrance at grade and you're not going to have this lobby with the stairs.
We've been, I guess, discussing that, and I guess, I mean...
Then you'd have no height waiver.
One of the major starting points for the Greek school with this site was, we're going to try and, we don't have a lot of money, and we're going to try and do this as efficiently as possible. And one of the efficiencies that was being contemplated was, let's try and use this foundation. So while I understand the BSA's point that the foundation is now, is really more of a liability than an asset, but I think that's not how it was perceived originally. I think the board has, with these comments, maybe turns it into a liability. But it was originally perceived as an asset when the building was, when the property was acquired and the original building was designed.
But it's functioning as a liability because it's driving most of these waivers. The front yard waiver, which frankly makes no sense for that little office and vestibule, would be completely unnecessary if you entered at grade and you didn't have two lobbies, right? And this whole idea of having two lobbies, you know, unnecessarily complicates the building.
May I?
Yes.
If you entered at grade and you were, you're still intended to have an auditorium.
You're going to have to excavate.
A substantial amount of excavation. Now, we're going to have to go down at least 14 feet between the construction, the footings, and, at least 14, okay? Now, if we go down 14 feet from the grade level, we're going to end up having to underpin the building on the adjacent lot. Because it's a two-to-one relationship before you have to underpin. So we have a seven-foot yard, and if we're going to build to the lot lines and we're going to go down 14 feet, we're going to be undermining his foundations.
So don't underpin, then do a step foundation.
But that means I have to come in on my sides now. So now I'm losing that...
What do you mean your sides? Just your rear. I thought the only adjacency is at the rear.
If I'm going to build, if I'm going to build a four with the lot.
Yeah.
In the cellar. That's what I assume we would do. Okay, the four with the lot, in the cellar. 14 feet down, we have a relationship between where the existing footings are of the adjacent building and where our footings are going to be.
You're saying you don't have enough, you don't have enough to make the 45 degrees for an angle of repose so that you don't under...
And so, and we're going to have that problem.
But, well, yeah, but still, the amount of sort of torture you're kind of putting yourself through to keep the foundation as it is
I understand.
is now driving your request for the waivers. So I think we're all kind of struggling with the idea that your decision to save some money has created this waiver that you need. So that's not necessarily the basis for a waiver because of a design decision. That's actually not the basis of a waiver.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a programmatic need drive, not, right? Supposed to be driven by programmatic need. Your programmatic need isn't to keep the existing foundations. The programmatic need is X number of classrooms, an auditorium, this and that, and this and that, right? So it's hard to be sympathetic...
But very often, though, a school needs to enlarge an existing building and a programmatic need requires...
But that's not what you're doing here. You're not enlarging an existing building.
But it builds on an existing condition.
No, you're demolishing an existing building. So you can't use the, "I have a unique physical condition of an obsolete existing building." What you're saying here is, "I'm hampered by this nasty, badly-located foundation, and I'm forced to work with it." And you're not forced to work with it. Most, you know, we see so many of these things where there's a school building or something that has an existing site, and their building is obsolete, and they tear it down. Down. Excavate down. And that enables them to build the right building, get the waivers they need that enable the height of the auditorium or the depth of the gym or whatever it is. And they don't, we, I don't think we ever see this kind of thing where the entire driver of the waivers is this really kind of...
Can we go through the waivers then? Because I think not all of the waivers are motivated or triggered by this problem. There's a rear yard waiver that doesn't have it.
The height.
It was only, I think, three and a...
It is not. It is up to the height of the trellis. If you're going to eliminate the trellis, and we talk about only permitted obstructions on the roof, then it's a true statement that it's 35, five feet more, three and a half feet more, wherever it is. But it's not true.
Fine. There would be a structure on, right, there would be the trellis structure above a fencing that is not a, that is a generally transparent or translucent thing.
No, 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 but the trellis is not permitted obstruction, right?
I understand that.
If you took that away...
But we've reduced the, we've reduced the building by one story already.
But you still have the height.
You have the front yard incursion.
Right.
You have the removal of a street tree.
A front yard incursion.
And you have the inability to install street trees. So that's a few different things.
But I think the characterization that all of these waivers are being driven by this foundation is not, is not accurate, and it's not, it's not a fair representation.
Well, then, take away the waivers, and then we wouldn't have this discussion. The height is clearly driven by the fact that you have a split-level lobby, clearly. If you, if you didn't have the split-level lobby, you would drop down to have a real cellar. Then you could have your solar panels on the roof, and they would be below the maximum height, which I think is six feet off the roof level.
Right. And only 25% I think of the roof can be covered.
Right.
And you have almost the entire roof covered.
Right, okay, so it wouldn't qualify. But still, I mean, you know, you could probably eliminate that waiver if you had dropped this down with a normal cellar.
In fact, the way you have it shown now, that roof is actually partially floor area.
Right, because it's...
Because it's not a permitted obstruction.
No, it's open and all shut.
It's not a permitted obstruction, so it would be counted as floor area.
It's enclosed. It's not enclosed.
It would be floor area.
Because it has a roof?
No, because it doesn't comply as a permitted obstruction.
No, no, no. Then it just doesn't comply with the Height and Setback Regulations. If the fence were something else, like we've seen on another school where they use that, like, opaking, that made floor area.
It would have to be enclosed. You've got to do the enclosure and...
Right.
May I say something?
Yeah.
Well, regarding to the street trees, Parks Department requires a five, six-wide planting sphere. We maintain a five, six-wide planting sphere. The reason why this tree's coming down is because of its size. Any excavation in this area to install this vault would compromise the root system of this large tree.
We know.
And then, you know, the tree would die and would have to be taken out anyhow.
Hence the reason not to have the vault.
But, if I may, if we maintain the five or six-wide planting sphere, we can plant trees now in that planting sphere, which will not be compromised because their root balls are much smaller. And we'll be, in fact, I believe, will be allowed to do that. We can get a determination from Parks where we'll be allowed to plant new trees in front of our roof. If that would, you know, help the situation.
I'm sad, frankly.
Spiro, again, that's what I was speaking about before. We're going to have that seven feet. As long as Parks is okay with planting trees there, we're willing to plant trees there.
Also, I do, again, considerable concern being expressed over the height of the building in that there are a number of different buildings in the area and large buildings that are just catty-corner from the property. There's the nursing home, there's the hospital.
Don't forget what this is about. This is a programmatic needs analysis. What's the programmatic need for this additional height of the building?
To accommodate the classrooms on a small and narrow lot.
No. 13-foot further height is to accommodate solar panels on the roof, right? What's the programmatic need? If you actually want to reduce the amount of energy consumption, you drop the solar panels so that they become permitted obstructions.
And then the building loses a valuable place space, which is part of its program.
So then you have a programmatic need for place space, but not for something that increases the Fahrenheit of the building.
The school is trying to operate, try to operate a lead platinum building and trying to be compliant with those requirements. And also trying to, not throwing out foundation is like an environmentally unfriendly thing. By trying to recapture and reuse as much of what's in the ground is something that they're... I'm not making that up. That's a conversation that I had with the applicant.
Tearing down an old tree and we're talking about environmentally friendly.
We will try. It's a small site, and I think, so it's a small and it's a shallow site. So it's, they're trying to do a lot of things on this site, and that's, I understand that. And I guess I'm trying to, and I've gone through, and I'm happy to run through more of that, the program to try and explain how and why this building is what's being sought here.
Some of the how and why we understand, but it's very clear that a lot of it is affected by this decision to maintain the foundations, right?
I guess I would ask...
And so then what do we do? We don't think that the front entryway is an appropriate waiver, right?
The front entryway is important, well, everything...
There's an office in it. What's important?
It's important, the building only has one office. It's a small office with a small reception.
Put the office in the side yard.
I guess...
The character of the neighborhood is these 15 foot fronts.
This applicant will ca... There is no character to the left of me. To the left of me is the 100-acre parkland that is the Poly Prep campus. And then beyond that is a, is an enormous golf course. To the right of me is a community facility building, a small professional office building. Across the street of me are a variety of buildings that are all built to the lot line and have a variety of undulating setbacks and heights. And I guess I'm trying to say is that while I understand...
The site plan shows, the site plan shows a medical building is set back 15 feet.
I didn't say it wasn't.
So then we're talking about...
Across the street, though, are buildings that are many buildings built to the...
We're talking about the character of the block having the 15-foot setback and whether or not you really need this 15-foot setback.
80% of my building is set back at the compliance. It's a tight plan, and it's only a one-and-a-half-story for a portion of the frontage vestibule space that has important energy benefits to the building, and it accommodates a very small and modest office space. Again, we were driven by trying to not have side yard non-compliances, and we're trying to, we're trying to minimize the...
To be frank, the small, modest office space is also coupled with the, if you want to say small and modest, but I'm not so sure it's small and modest, reception area. So you add those two together and faced with sort of the very modest use of the building during the week, where you have really very little use of that building from like Monday to Thursday.
Thursday.
Given, given having to have that kind of, you know, 300, 400 square feet of space that is devoted to what? To somebody waiting for a child or... So the thing of it is, is that if you did come in on grade, I think you probably have a much better chance of...
I don't think, we don't dispute that.
Moving all of that back and being able to gracefully enter and have, have a respectful space for reception and for an office.
I understand that, and we understand that. And we, I think we probably wish it was easy for us to accommodate that, that at-grade lobby. Nobody, everybody would rather have a lobby that is easy to roll into. It would eliminate a lot of elevator complications and the move, just easier circulation and movement. But it comes at a significant expense. And I mean, if you want us to, we will gladly document that expense. And we have partially, I think maybe we can even...
Well, you know, but it's each one, you can't say this is more expensive and there's no impact on the alternative solution. You have this split-level lobby. There's an expense there. There's all kinds of things, there's strange things going on in the cellar with the split level for the, for the vault and all of that sort of stuff. I mean, you can't say that there's no expense for going with the alternative solution.
I just think that the lobby space, which is clearly such an affront to the board, it occupies 24 feet of the, as opposed to 36 feet of frontage that is compliant, 24 feet that is not compliant, by seven feet. It feels like a relatively minor request in the scheme of the, of the waivers being sought here.
You know what I think the board is having a problem with in part? Is because this building is utilized so little and that the waivers are, let's say, the waivers seem big for so little utilization of the building. And they seem, let's say, to be the result of awkward planning. If, if the building were, you know, kind of a beautiful, or let's say, really well-worked out, clearly understood, maybe the reaction would be different. But each time we see those wacky staircases on the side and, you know, there is no, there is no kind of rhyme or reason to where stair one and stair two are. They're just there. And so, and the massing of the building, which is something that is going to be visible from everywhere, hasn't been worked out.
The notion that this is a massive structure, I just think is misplaced. This is a building that will appear to be three stories with a trellis. It will have a fence that will be virtually a clear fence.
It will appear to be four stories.
Which is next to a building that is a tall two-story building. It is not, it is not a skyscraper, and it is not out of context with the seven-story, six-story, five-story buildings that are across the street. I just think that the, that the notion that this is some, there's just been a lot of disparaging remarks about the aesthetic of the building and that, that I don't feel are fair in the context where we are.
Have there been, I mean, you see the drawings that we have. We have these very simple drawings that continue to show this material that I absolutely abhor. And the, and no effort to show us that we've got a building that is going to be an asset to the neighborhood in any kind of visual...
That's not fair at all to the...
Excuse me, if we get applications where there is a submission of a rendering to show us how the building works within the context of the neighborhood, where we understand the massing, where the massing decisions make sense to the neighborhood. And there's been no effort to show us any of that here. And, you know, I'm sorry, we don't have these drawings, and I look, they don't exist. So if you want to make a case for this being a better building than what apparently it is in the drawings, then make that case. But there's a lot of kind of haphazard movements that are made here that don't seem justifiably supported by programmatic need. And so, when we push back and say, "The program doesn't need the vestibule to have an office in it" because the building is only occupied after 3 o'clock and on Saturdays.
That's not, it's a UPK program that occupies the first floor of the building, right?
Occupies two classrooms, occupies two classrooms on the first floor. That's it.
Right.
And the rest of the building lights off.
We understand. That's, we represented that from the beginning on this application.
Understood. So hence, hence a problem on our part with the way, the scope of the waivers because the building isn't really that much utilized. There's this one day a week where the building's utilized.
That's not, that is a, that is not true.
Well, it's true.
The building is used every day of the week.
It's used from 3 o'clock to 6 o'clock.
Except Sunday.
It's used from...
But it's used busy from...
It's used for three hours.
You said it was only used on Saturday. It is used every day of the week.
It's used for the entirety of the day on Saturday and used for three hours in the evening.
I think what we are trying to, what we are trying to grapple with here and share, and I think we have all said it, is that, yes, you do have programs scattered throughout the weekdays, and the heaviest amount of programs you have is for the weekend. But it's difficult for us to justify for the limited amount of programs that you have for the weekdays, which is only from 3 onwards, to have such, so many classrooms, office space, all of these programming spaces that are being put together for an operation where primarily Saturday is really the day where it's in full operation, and rest of the time, it's there only from 3 to 5. And that's, you need to help us kind of give us an argument to make us, to help us give the, to understand why we need all of these spaces and why we should grant this.
And you can't say growing. This is the five-year projection we're talking about. I'm not talking about tomorrow, and we're not even sure we have the five-year projection supported. That was a comment that was made yesterday. We were like, "How do we know that in five years, you're going to have this kind of an...?"
Funny enough, we actually saw another project where it is a school which is operating from 9 to 5, and it has, it's a two-shift, and they have office spaces for five of their staff members. And it's much, I mean, they're almost like huddled in a space that's almost smaller than the reception and office space. So I think we're asking for things that are just very reasonable and to reduce the amount of variances as much as possible and not trying to eliminate any of the programmatic needs. But you're also not giving us a strong argument to make a case for us to accept that.
May it please the board, my name is Kirk Sadidis. I'm the general counsel to the Greek School of Plato. I'm not an architect. I'm not an engineer. I am an attorney, but not a zoning attorney. I'd like to raise two points that I think I'd like to impress upon the board. Number one, we talk about the character. The character of the community is not just the bricks and the cement of this particular building. It's 40 years...